...in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Here.
Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the city clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom. You will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each item. But before we get started tonight, I want to read a statement on behalf of all city council and city staff. I'm sure all who have heard about the fire at the Middlefield Junction construction site in North Fair Oaks today share our deep dismay. The Middlefield Junction development was slated to provide over 170 new apartment units, all reserved for residents earning below the median income, and with 20 apartments set aside for persons experiencing homelessness. Today, it burned down to its foundation. I know all our hearts and thoughts go out to the families whose hopes were pinned on Middlefield Junction. We can be thankful, however, that no injuries were reported. The regional response, which marshaled over 120 firefighters, underlines the unique sense of community shared among the cities of the peninsula, and I'm confident that same spirit will drive the recovery from this disaster as we've come together so often in past. Once again, our thoughts go out to all the families and thanks to all the firefighters for their actions today. So with that, we want to move on to the ceremonial section of our agenda, and we have a wonderful Pride Month proclamation, and I would like to invite down Craig Weisner, the County of San Mateo LGBTQIA+ Commission. Is Craig here? Oh, he's remote. There he is.
I'm here.
Hello, Craig. So, so close. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I would like to, on behalf of the council, read this proclamation and say how thrilled we are to be able to make this tonight. Whereas the City of San Mateo proclaims the month of June 2024 as Pride Month and honors the LGBTQ individuals who have immeasurably impacted the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country, and whereas the City of San Mateo honors the history of the American gay rights movement and proclaims our respect for the LGBTQ activists and allies who fought and continue to fight relentlessly for equality, and whereas Pride Month is a time to celebrate and uplift the LGBTQ community, and the City of San Mateo is committed to promoting progress, tolerance, inclusivity, and visibility, and whereas on June 8th, we are honored to open our downtown streets and make way for San Mateo County's Pride Parade, where our city representatives, I'm thinking just about everyone on this dais, will walk in solidarity with our LGBTQ community members and organizations, and whereas providing support and safe spaces for the LGBTQ community is imperative. The City of San Mateo is a proud supporter of the San Mateo County Pride Center, which provides direct clinical services, case management services, education workshops, and resources to individuals and families in need, and whereas the City of San Mateo strongly condemns hate in all forms and strives to build a society where our citizens are valued and treated with dignity regardless of how they look, how they identify, or whom they love, and whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for San Mateo County's LGBTQ community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now, therefore, the City of San Mateo hereby recognizes June 2024 as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ community, and be it further resolved that the rainbow flag will be raised at City Hall on June 4th, 2024, recognizing all LGBTQ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make the City of San Mateo a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. Signed, Lisa Diaz Nash, Mayor, June 3rd, 2024. Thank you to everyone, and our heartiest congratulations.
Thank you. So Mayor Diaz Nash, Deputy Mayor Newsom, councilmembers, neighbors, and friends, thank you for recognizing, supporting, and proclaiming June as Pride Month and flying the flag. San Mateo was one of the first cities in the county to make support for our community visible in this wonderful way. Your leadership helped usher in a time when every single city and town in the county, as well as the county itself, are celebrating Pride Month. I was 10 when the Stonewall riots launched the movement for LGBTQIA+ equality, and as a gay man at 20, 30, even 50, I never would have imagined the progress we've made. This is well worth celebrating. Like you said, this Saturday, I hope everyone will come out for the Second Annual Pride Parade in downtown and have fun at the Pride Fair in Central Park. Details are at smcpridecelebration.com. I do need to share that despite great progress, anti-LGBTQIA legislation, book banning, and attacks against our community are on the rise, especially against those who identify as trans. This year, the Coast Pride Center in Half Moon Bay was vandalized three times. I encourage people to stand in solidarity with Coast Pride and stand up against hate in all its forms, against anyone. Our diversity makes us strong, even stronger when we celebrate that diversity as you are doing today. Thank you again for making San Mateo a welcoming place for everyone who lives, works, and visits here. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to having everyone come to the Pride Parade on Saturday. Thank you, Craig. So now we will move on to another wonderful proclamation and recognition, our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force. And this is very apropos, given we just spent a lot of time talking about diversity. Denise Garcia, Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office, is coming down along with James Moore and Lisa.
I'll be through with me.
Okay, okay. You can introduce everyone. There we go.
Yeah, thank you.
There we go. So let me read this amazing proclamation or certificate of recognition for all of you and everyone else who was part. This is a certificate of recognition by the City of San Mateo to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force. That comprises Alex Golding, San Mateo Pride Center; Debbie Soon, Self Help for the Elderly; Amanda Russell, Caminar; Lijia Andrade Zuniga, San Mateo High School Unified District and Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities; Adam Newsom, North Central Hanslem; Lisa Tealer, Bay Area Community Health Advisory Council; Reina Sandoval, Samaritan House; Inesa Shishmanyan, Peninsula Family Services; Jeanette Simmons, Jr., San Mateo United, Burrell; Dana Stor, Police Activities League Board; Erica Wood, Chamber of Commerce; Dr. Christian Rupal Kaba, San Mateo Foster City School Board; and Teresa Rose, San Mateo United, Baywood. Signed, Lisa Diaz Nash, Mayor. Congratulations.
Good evening, and thank you so much for the opportunity to just formally recognize and conclude our DEI Task Force. I have a small presentation just to highlight some of our accomplishments and where we've started. So it, oh, it's okay. So it started back in July of 2021, when the start of the new fiscal year strategic plan was in effect. That's when our city council priority of creating some sort of DEI task force was formed. In January of 2022, the convenings started and we formalized the group, and at our first meeting, they shared the need for a DEI vision, which is something we didn't have, and they thought if we have a vision that can help guide our DEI efforts. So really, their input was really monumental in us creating a DEI strategic framework, so I want to thank them for that. January 22, all the way until January 2024, we met on a once-a-month basis, and they met their objectives. They built partnerships, they shared resources, and they identified ways to increase community participation and engagement to our sectors of the community that we don't typically reach out to. I just wanted to list out and name everyone who makes up the task force, including some of our city staff. As you can see, we have James Moore, who he was really one of our city staff who participated and played an active role in the task force, and everyone else, and also you all mentioned, but we have Inesa and Lisa Tealer here as well, and I'm going to invite them to say a few words after this next slide. And I just wanted to highlight again, here are some of our accomplishments. Like I mentioned earlier, we created the DEI strategic plan with a framework. They've also made recommendations to city council and ways to diversify boards and commissions, and they've also helped shape the Racial Equity Art Project that we see out on B Street in downtown. And lastly, they provided input for consideration on policies such as the draft housing plan and even the general plan. Thank you so much, and again, I invite our fellow task force members to say a few words. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, distinguished members of the city council. My name is James Moore, City Librarian of San Mateo. So this is just an opportunity to tell you a little bit about what we accomplished and to thank the people who really, really deserve a ton of credit. So first of all, thank you to the council for making this a priority. This was an exercise truly in jumping off the ledge and building your wings on the way down. So we started with some people who didn't finish, and so one of the things I want to do is really to acknowledge and thank Lisa and Inesa because they are absolute champions of this cause for our City of San Mateo. I also want to thank former Assistant City Manager Kathy Kleinbaum and former City of San Mateo Senior Management Analyst Heather Stewart. They both did incredible work. It was challenging in the beginning because we just, we're just building it from scratch. And so it is an amazing reminder to me of that if you just stick with something and you get through the tough part, then something really positive can come out of it. And so what we have and what we are using right now at the library is we're using the DEI framework that was made, and it's something that allows us to ask ourselves good questions about the programs that we're embarking on. It doesn't make us do anything specifically. It just gives us a framework to use to ask, who are we helping, who might we be harming, and what are the outcomes? And so I want tangible results that I can show my staff for their time. And so I think Denise deserves probably the most credit of anyone from the city for seeing this through from start to finish. She showed real leadership skills. We had a wonderful consultant, Myra Joelavet, who is now doing wonderful work with us on the library strategic plan, but she and Denise really put this together and really gave us a tool, a very helpful tool. So I just want to say thank you to you all for making this a priority. Thank you so much to Inesa and Lisa because I feel like everything that I go to that is about people, that is about helping people, that is about bringing people together, I see these two there. So they're absolutely committed. And to Denise, I am just, I just, you know, Denise is a champion. She doesn't like the spotlight, but she really stepped forward and showed a lot of leadership skills, and this was one time in which I was really glad to say, Denise, you take the lead and let me just help you. So she deserves probably the most credit of any of us. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Greetings, Mayor Diaz Nash and city council members and staff. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for the opportunity to participate as a member of the Diversity Equity Task Force. It was an incredible experience to work with a very diverse group of individuals, community leaders, and city staff, and I hope that you see that our accomplishments reflect our commitment and responsibility to this initiative. I did want to say that as we approach a different phase, my hope is that the work that has been done within this task force can be incorporated in the way the city conducts its business practices and engages with the community at large. My hope that it's not seen as an add-on, but a positive mind shift and an asset on who the city is and who it represents. Whether it's embedded in recruiting and retention strategies, or educational offerings for staff positions, commissions, and boards, supply diversity initiatives, how we set up contracts with our vendors, engagement and support of our local businesses, capital investments, public safety, or environmental justice, as well as addressing the needs of the city's diverse community, supporting community health initiatives and cultural events and activities, or providing novel and out-of-the-box approaches and solutions to current and future issues. There will be challenges, but nothing can't be resolved when we work together. We are part of an ecosystem, and we need one another to flourish. Please know that you can contact me as well as our other diverse equity inclusion task force members in the future as you move along this critical journey. Thank you for the recognition of our efforts. Thank you again, Lisa Tealer.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to take this opportunity and to thank you for having me. It's been an absolute honor working with, collaborating with City Fox and the fellow task members. So I will be brief, so thank you again.
Councilmember Lee would like to say something.
Thank you so much. I'm sitting here with such a sense of gratification and gratitude for the work of the task force and thinking back to that council priority that I set so long ago. It was, you know, just to provide some historical context, it was in the wake of the tragic murder of George Floyd, and as a city and policymakers, we were asking ourselves, what fundamentally needs to shift? And how do we step beyond performative action and symbolism to actually change how we do business? What questions do we need to ask ourselves to lift everyone up? What are the processes and resource requirements and cultural shifts that are required to do that? And I know that this task force was formed with sort of an amorphous task, and there were some storming and uncomfortable questions and moments. And what was really profound, I think, was when the community and the members of the task force came back to us and as the council and said, this is not, you know, this is not a question of what do we do today, right, only? The question is, how do we institutionalize this change? How do we create a theory of change and a philosophy and an approach that we're committed to in the long run? And that's what the framework is. And so this is, you know, this has a profound legacy for our city, and I'm so grateful for the staff and also the community members who really did right by us in this process. Thank you so much. I'm really, I'm so moved. Thank you.
All right. After such a wonderful start to our session, let us move on to the consent calendar. City Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, California Transportation Commission Local Streets and Roads Project List Fiscal Year 2024-25. Item number four, Fiscal Year 2024-25 General Obligation Bond Tax Rate Levy. Item number five, Fleet Maintenance Services Amendment. Item number six, Domestic Violence Co-Response Advocate Program Memorandum of Understanding. Item number seven, B Street Pedestrian Mall Improvements Project Agreement. Item number eight, Downtown Business Improvement Area Resolution of Intent for Annual Renewal. Item number nine, Columbia Drive Crystal Springs Storm Drain Improvement Amendment. Item number 10, Administrative Hearing Officer On-Call Services Agreement. Item number 11, Summer Camp Bus Transportation Agreement. Item number 12, 2024-2025 School Crossing Guards Agreement. Item number 13, Community Development Permit Tracking Software Amendment. Item number 14, 390 First Avenue Lease Amendment.
Thank you. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Councilmember Hedges.
I don't really want to pull it, but I want to comment on item 10 and thank our city manager for having the idea to do this. It makes such great sense, and I think the first time I met him, he brought it up, and I'm very thankful for it. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Anyone else to pull? All right. If any member of the public who wishes to comment on any consent calendar item now, now would be the time to make your comment. This is comment for consent calendar items only. Do we have any comments?
Madam Mayor, we have no request to speak on the consent calendar.
Okay, great. Then is there a motion from council?
Madam Mayor, I'd move approval to the consent calendar.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
The motion carries 5-0.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Hedges took his opportunity to comment before. I'm taking my opportunity to comment now. There are two things that I would like the public to be aware of in what we approved in the consent calendar. The first is item four, Fiscal Year 2024-25 General Obligation Bond Tax Rate Levy. That doesn't sound very exciting, but what it means is very important. So for those of you who don't read city notes all the time, in 1999, voters approved a $35 million bond issue to finance construction of a new main library and improvements to the city's branch libraries. And there was payment over the years, and everything was going on, the bonds were refinanced, but an annual resolution is required to provide the county and the authority to include this levy on the annual tax roll. And the tax levy that is being proposed this year represents a 47% reduction from the prior-year levy of $5.70 per 100,000 of assessed value. And we were able, city staff was able to receive that 47% reduction because of actual growth in the city's assessed value exceeding the projected growth in prior years. And city staff took a look at that and said, since we are above and beyond what we need, excess fund balance can be used to reduce tax levy. It's not often the taxes are reduced, so I wanted to call that out as something that's important, and also call out the fact that the final debt service payment on this bond will be made in fiscal year 2030-31. So there is a beginning, a middle, and an end, and hopefully taxpayers in the city will appreciate that. But I wanted to thank staff for the work there. And then also, I wanted to call out item number eight, which is, there we go, Downtown Business Improvement Area Resolution of Intent for Annual Renewal, and encourage everyone to look at this and read the attachment because our Downtown San Mateo Association submitted its annual report as part of this item, and it talks about all the incredible work that's been going on throughout the community to activate and beautify and get our community more engaged with the downtown. So I encourage everyone to read this very excellent report and participate in all the items and events that are coming forward. So thank you very much for that. So then with that, we move on to the next item on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Clerk, could you please tally the total number of requests to speak on general public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. In council chambers, we've received a total of 10 requests to speak for general public comment. If you're in chamber or in a remote environment, if you're in your remote environment, please raise your hand now. It'll help us with tallying the total number of speakers. And if you have not done so already and you wish to speak and you are in chambers, please provide me with a Request to Speak slip. So Madam Mayor, that gives us with a total of 11 requests to speak. So per the city council's adopted rules and procedures, we provide for between 11 to 20 speakers, two minutes per speaker. So we look for council direction on...
Two minutes?
Two minutes per speaker. So we'll start with our request to speak in chambers first. If I call your name, if you could kindly line up to my right, that'd be very much appreciated. So our first three speakers will be Nicholas Einbody, followed by Gary Welch and Ashley Snodgrass.
Good evening, council. My name is Nicholas Einbody. I work for the City of San Mateo as a construction inspector. I've been with the city for seven years. I come to you today as the chief steward from the SMCEA organization, currently in contract negotiations. I wanted to touch on some of the recent city council approvals for pay increases for city employees. The city attorney received a 9.3% increase. Assistant City Manager received a 15% increase. The police chief received a 12% increase, also done surveyed by an outside consulting company. HR Director is currently in the process of receiving a 3.5% increase for the position that's going to go out. that's going to go out, also done by a consulting company. The deputy city clerk received an increase of 34.09%, also surveyed by a consulting company. The city council itself has received a total compensation increase of 50% to $12,000 a month. We have spent a total of $4.5 million on workday to get this up and running the program. I come to you sat in with deep hearts from my fellow coworkers to my left over here. The offer that we were given was extremely disappointing for the work that we do for this city. We have gone through the struggles of having coffee with employees in the morning and losing them to more competitive cities because they pay more. Right now, there's only three people in our group that gets paid to median. And in our contract, that's what the city said they will do, is pay our employees to median. We are nowhere near median. We were also told that the city could not pay for an outside consulting company to figure out what the percentage for each job was. We did it ourselves in five days.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Gary Welt, followed by Ashley Snodgrass and Vivian Zetet.
Madam Mayor, city council, thank you for your time. My name is Gary Welt. I'm a member of the city for 17, almost 17 years. I worked for the library department. I'm the library technology specialist. As the others, as Nick said and others will say as well, I've dedicated almost 17 years to the city and unfortunately, the city hasn't reciprocated in my pay. I've, the only reason I've got much in raises is because of the steps I've been able to get year after year. But after that, I've been topped out in scales most of the time I've been with the city. In my position, there is really no next level. It's been harder and harder to maintain financially with the city, working for the city. My rent has almost doubled since the time I started. My grocery bills in the last month, year has almost doubled, as I'm sure yours I've seen too. Medical expenses are higher, all that. And so, it just gets harder to continue to not look elsewhere for a position. I recently signed up for some job postings and I see a lot of IT positions open out there. So, I don't want to leave this city, but there's going to come a point where, you know, rent may not be able to be paid if I stay where I'm at. So, I hope you can see that, that if you want to keep dedicated, skilled people, you have to pay them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be, thank you. Thank you. So, for council chambers, rules of decorum, we do not allow for any clapping, cheering, or jeering as that can put a chill on our public comments. So, we appreciate you understanding that. So, our next three speakers will be Ashley Snodgrass, followed by Vivian Zetet and Tracy Brummett. And our final speaker on this item will be Marcella McCollum.
Distinguished council members, my name is Ashley Snodgrass and I address you today as a dedicated member of the city of San Mateo's workforce. With a little over two years of service in the community development department, I've seen firsthand the impact of our collective efforts on our community. However, despite our dedication, a troubling reality persists. Our salaries fall far below the market median. In a county known for its high housing costs, many of us struggle to make ends meet. I personally began this job living at home in Brentwood with a two-and-a-half-hour commute one way because I was unable to find affordable housing close to work. This was very difficult in the beginning because I do planning commission meetings and they would run very, very late. So, having to drive all the way back to Brentwood when a meeting has already run till like 11:00 PM or even midnight was very difficult. I was excited about Kiki Crossing and contemplated applying, but after reading the fine print, I realized I would be unable to afford even a studio apartment with my take-home salary. I'm lucky to have moved to San Mateo with my sister, who also works in local government, but I'm now living paycheck to paycheck. This financial strain drives talented individuals away, leaving behind vacancies and high turnover. Without competitive compensation, our city's ability to provide essential services is compromised. We implore action to fulfill the city's promises and provide market wages. Our community deserves nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Vivian, followed by Tracy Brummett and James Yang.
Good evening, honor admirers and council. My name is Vivian. I work with the building department community service, community, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous right now, but community development department. I'm expressing my frustrations, my disappointment with the management and the city who's doing the negotiation and thinking about our employees when you guys want to be diverse and care about our employees. I used to live in San Francisco. I moved to San Mateo so I could get closer to work. I have worked here for more than five years, not including as a consultant employee. And the last seven years, I have seen people leaving and going to places saying that they have families, they can't afford to work here, other city pays more. Even during COVIDs, I've seen so many people, I'm assuming maybe like 75 to 80% in that community development divisions have left so many employees just because they can't afford to work here, they can't have housing and everything else. I try to express to you guys that you guys could consider looking into the median pay because, just because we're not all complaining, doesn't mean that we're not caring right now. Right now, people is concerned, I'm frustrated, I'm overworked the last few years. And I keep thinking that it will be fine once they hire new people. But they hire people, people find that it's not a great place they want to work and they leave. That's not what we want. That's not the workforce that we want. We want people to stay here. We want long-term people. But without, you know, all these old people leave, leaving and new people coming in, they don't know nothing. We're going by sketch. And by, you know, raising, looking into the concealer salary mediums, it'll help a lot. So, please consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Tracy Brummett, followed by James Yang and Sang Hee Chu.
Good evening, esteemed members of the council. My name is Tracy Brummett. I have worked with this department for close to 27 years, part-time and full-time. I am currently a community services supervisor with the Parks and Recreation Department. I have also been a resident, lucky enough to be a resident of this city for a majority of my life, and I am now raising my two daughters here. Unfortunately, I have witnessed firsthand the challenge faced by our workforce. The salaries within the general unit lag behind median market by more than 10%. On average, this discrepancy not only hampers our ability to attract and retain talent, but also impedes our capacity to deliver essential services to our community. High vacancy rates persist exacerbated capacity to deliver essential services by our inability to compete with neighboring cities like Dublin and Gilroy, let alone Redwood City. We urge council to rectify this disparity by restoring the general unit's base salary to median levels, similar to what is being done for management as standalone council items. This year alone, an adjustment of at least 10% on average is imperative to ensure our workforce stability and effectiveness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be James Yang, followed by Sang Hee Chu and Laura Richstone.
Respect to city council members and Madam Mayor. My name is James Yang and I speak to you today as a dedicated member of the city of San Mateo workforce. I'm relatively new to the city of San Mateo, but I've already witnessed the positive impacts of the work that we do for the community members here. However, despite our dedication, a troubling reality persists. Our salaries fall 10% below median. In a county where housing costs rank among the nation's highest, many of us struggle to afford homes and support our families. This financial strain drives talented individuals away, leaving behind vacancies and high turnover. It's hard to see a city in one of the wealthiest counties in the country pay less than the city of Gilroy, where costs are much lower. Without competitive compensation, our city's ability to provide essential services is compromised. And in the memorandum of understanding, there's a line that says that the city is committed to providing top-step base salaries in line with median. Yet, this commitment has been overlooked for over 15 years. Instead, we resort to desperate measures such as staff being told not to reach out to HR due to severe staffing shortages. Meanwhile, council agenda items routinely grant substantial adjustments to management while the general unit remains neglected. We implore action to fulfill the city's promises and provide market wages. Our community deserves nothing less and I know you understand as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sang Hee Chu, followed by Laura Richstone and Rico Gonzalez.
Good evening, city council and Madam Mayor Nash. My name is Sang and I address you today as a dedicated member of the city of San Mateo's workforce. For one and a half years, I've served in the public works department and witnessed firsthand the positive impact of our efforts in the community. Despite our contributions, however, our stark reality remains. Our salaries fall 10% below the market median. In a county with soaring home prices, many of us struggle to make ends meet. The financial strain drives talented individuals away, leaving us with high turnover rates and vacancies. Without competitive wages, our city's ability to deliver vital services falters. The MOU between the city and our general unit emphasizes aligning salaries with comparable cities, yet this commitment has been neglected for over 15 years. Instead, we resort to measured, measures like staff augmentation for our projects and paying third parties inflated rate schedules which far exceed what we pay our own employees. At this point, the city of San Mateo pays its employees less than cities like Gilroy and Dublin. Recently, council agenda items frequently grant substantial adjustments to management with adjustments of 10 to 34% while the general unit languishes. It's disheartening to see our dedication met with disregard. We urge action to fulfill the city's priorities and provide market wages. Our community deserves nothing less. Thank you for attention to this matter and we trust in your commitment to our general unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Laura Richstone, followed by Rico Gonzalez and Lisa Teeler.
Hi, good evening. My name is Laura Richstone and I actually grew up in San Mateo. My parents bought their house and moved into it when I was three weeks old and I went to George Hall, Abbott, and Hillstill High School. For the last three years, I've been an associate planner with CDD, working on current and long-range planning projects which ultimately seek to increase housing. As the largest city in the county, San Mateo is a dynamic and really, really interesting place to work, especially as a planner. And while I'm proud of the work that I've done here, I can no longer afford to live in this city and have been forced to move out of the place that I grew up in, which is a shame and very disheartening. Looking at my job title, San Mateo pays consistently and significantly below the median. Not to put these cities down, but as you heard, Gilroy and Dublin pay less than San Mateo, or excuse me, pay more than San Mateo. I'm not asking the city to fix the housing crisis, but I am asking for you guys to do your fair share by getting its employees to median salary. Unfortunately, the city has not been a median payer for 15 years and as a result of this non-competitive salary, we have retention issues. From a personal experience, I've seen within the last three years at CDD, an almost 20% vacancy rate and there's been almost 100% turnover in planners. And salary honestly is the driving force for why people leave. We just can't retain people. The catchphrase for San Mateo should not be "San Mateo below the median." There are many, many things that make this city shine and we just ask that you invest in me and our other employees so that we can continue to work here and provide the services that we love to provide to our residences. Thank you for the ability to speak and to hear my story.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rico Gonzalez, followed by Lisa Teeler.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me. My name is Mauricio Gonzalez. I'm currently a construction inspector for the Department of Public Works Engineering Department. I've been a dedicated worker for this city for more than nine years. I've also had the privilege of being the San Mateo City Employees Association President for four years. I believe it's the largest or one of the largest general labor units this city of San Mateo has. A direct quote from Section 12.2 of our MOU contract, "The city seeks to set top-step base salaries equal to the median of comparable cities in San Mateo, Santa Clara, and Alameda Counties." I repeat what has been in our contract for decades. "The city seeks to set top-step base salaries equal to the median of comparable cities in San Mateo, Santa Clara, and Alameda Counties." SMCA was told by the city that there are 21 benchmark job classifications that make up the city hierarchy. Essentially, once we know all, once we know the 21 benchmark job classification, their salaries, we could extrapolate all salaries for everyone in our unit. Last week, SMCA did a top-based step salary survey for all 17 cities and for all 21 job classifications. We discovered the following. Two job classifications out of the 21 surveyed. City of San Mateo had the lowest pay out of all 17 cities surveyed. Seven job classifications out of the 21 surveyed. City of San Mateo had the second lowest pay out of all 17 cities surveyed. City of San Mateo is in the bottom three cities for 62% of the benchmark classifications. Furthermore, over 90% of the benchmark classifications in terms of salary for the 17 cities surveyed are in the bottom five. Only two job classifications that were surveyed for City of San Mateo reached median pay. We are urging city council to pay livable wages. It's absurd that you can make more money in Dublin and Gilroy when the median household payment in California is the highest in San Mateo County.
Thank you. And our final speaker in chamber will be Lisa Teeler.
I promise this will be the last time you hear from me today. Greetings, Mayor Diaz Nash, city council members, city manager and staff. On behalf of the Bay Area Community Health Advisory Council, also known as BAC-HAC, I would like to thank you for your sponsorship of Soulstroll 2020-24 Movement is Resistance and for your participation in this free community health event on Saturday, May 18th. Although the services that we provide were free, we did charge for our fundraiser. The Soulstroll for Health event had over 560 community members and approximately 40 resource tables that made up our community health village. Each table had an average of 200 people visit their table and community members received services such as blood glucose checks, blood pressure readings, HIV and STI testing, COVID vaccines, and access to mental health professionals. Other highlights and data and photos from the event will be shared later this month on our website. We hope that you can support and participate in Soulstroll for 2025. It will also be the 30th anniversary of the Bay Area Community Health Advisory Council, which was co-founded by San Mateo resident and community leader, Mrs. Gloria Brown. Thanks again for your support.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment, we will now take Somer Smith. Somer, if you could please unmute your mic.
Thank you, Martin. Good evening, Madam Mayor and esteemed council members. My name is Somer Smith and I address you today as a dedicated member of the city of San Mateo's workforce. For four years, I've served in the community development department and have witnessed firsthand the positive impact of our efforts on the community. I can honestly say that I love my job. Despite our contributions, a stark reality remains. Our salaries fall more than 10% below the median market. This gap in wages drives talented individuals away, leaving us with high turnover and vacancies. And we all know that high turnover stretches staff mentally and physically and lowers morale. This has become an unsustainable burden for staff. To put it simply, we are passionate about our work and commitment to this city, but we are exhausted. If you're looking for an example of high turnover, look no farther than the community development department. As an employee of only four years, I am the second most senior person in the planning division. Only one other person has been there longer than me. We urge action to fulfill the city's promises and provide market wages. Our community deserves nothing less. Thank you for your attention and we trust that you will take this input to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Marcella McCollum. Marcella, please unmute your mic.
Yes, thank you. I am not an employee, but as someone who works in the public sector, I recognize the lack of equitable pay for general employees. Cities need employees that can afford to live here, and I really hope there is a way for the city to support our employees in a more financially sustainable manner for our neighbors and the people that are so important to our workforce stability, but that is not the reason that I raise my hand. As a parent in the LGBTQ+ community, I wanted to make a request for future planning. Somehow, the city has chosen to hold their citywide garage sale the same weekend as the San Mateo County Pride Parade and Celebration. For the last few years, which is how long I've known about the San Mateo Pride, the celebration, and more recently, the parade, has consistently been the second Saturday in June, and the San Mateo yard sale has typically been in late July, and I've happily participated in both. And unfortunately, with the conflicting dates in our city calendar, that's causing a little bit of a challenge. So, we just, the mayor just made the proclamation honoring Pride Month, and I appreciate the intent. I'm so proud of the flag that will be raised tomorrow, but I am concerned about the message that is unintentionally being sent by advertising the yard sale and not advertising the Pride Parade in the city, the city e-newsletter. So, we have this countywide celebration of inclusion, love, pride right in our backyard, and we just heard about the Soulstroll, which was advertised in our e-newsletter. So, maybe the city can show its pride by supporting these events and thinking through when they're scheduled and making sure that the community is aware of the amazing things that we do within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. I will close public comment, but one thing I do want to mention to the public is that city staff is working on a more comprehensive outward-facing city calendar so that we can start to address some of the event collisions that sometimes happen because we are so grateful to everyone for all the work and all the events that are put on, and we want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to take advantage of them. So, thank you for that comment. Let's move on to item number fifteen, Citywide Complete Streets Plan and Update. Sue Ellen Atkinson, Principal Transportation Planner in Public Works, and her colleagues. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Sue Ellen Atkinson, Principal Transportation Planner in the Public Works Department, and I'm here tonight with our consultant, Carrie Modi, from Farr and Peers, to present an update on the Citywide Complete Streets Plan. So, tonight we'll be doing a brief refresh on the project, going through a community engagement update since we were last here, stepping through the priority corridors, and then spending a bit more time walking through the methodology for street typologies and modal prioritization. We also have questions for the council that we would like you to focus on as we go through the presentation, and those are primarily focused in the street typologies and the modal prioritizations. So, essentially, do you have feedback on how the street typologies were developed? Does council have feedback on how the modal priorities were then assigned to each street typology? And then finally, does council have feedback on the resulting modal priorities map? So, just as a refresher of what complete streets are, it's really looking at a citywide network and looking at how we can comfortably and safely accommodate all modes for getting around in the city, really re-envisioning how our roadways are utilized and ensuring that there is access and safety for all users. Complete streets aim to make streets comfortable, safe, and accessible for all ways of getting around the city. So, we're coming tonight to talk about the Complete Streets Plan, and as you know, we have a lot of plans in the city already. The Complete Streets Plan brings a number of those plans together comprehensively. So, you'll see here there are a number of different plans that focus on single mode options, like the pedestrian master plan or bicycle master plan, or from our regional partners, the Reimagine SamTransNet effort for transit. What the Complete Streets Plan does is looks at all of those plans across modes and helps us prioritize what we're doing on our roadways from a multimodal standpoint. We also have some pretty important plans that we've been coordinating with as we go. So, the first being the recently adopted General Plan 2040, and the Complete Streets Plan falls under the General Plan 2040 and really serves to implement the multimodal transportation vision that's in the circulation element of our new general plan, as well as specific goals of Vision Zero and Equity. So, then you have the Complete Streets Plan, which is that implementation arm for those comprehensive multimodal priorities. And then you recently heard and adopted the Local Roadway Safety Plan, and that really looks at specific safety improvements and gives us a toolbox of safety measures that can be done at spot locations, and that falls in under the Complete Streets Plan. We're lucky to be working on both of those plans at the same time in Public Works, so we were able to coordinate on content and also on engagement at some points. So, there are a lot of things that are going into the Complete Streets Plan, and that's why we've been working on it for a while. So, in March of 2023, we came to you to go over the community engagement strategy, which was proposed to be done in three phases and really sought to get out to as much of the community as possible in different ways. We then returned to City Council in October of 2023 and brought an update on what we had been working on, which was evaluating what was currently on the ground and already in adopted plans in our existing conditions inventory, and then taking that and determining what was still needed in the Complete Streets Plan and where the demand for multimodal transportation was. We also did an overview of Phase One of community engagement, which focused on stakeholder interviews and initial focus groups with the community to get a sense of what the concerns were in the community and what the Complete Streets Plan should be centered around. We also introduced the four key policies of the plan, and then also introduced the Design Standards Manual, which is part of the final deliverables of the plan. So, tonight, we're back to you to discuss Phase Two and Phase Three of community engagement. So, we've rounded out community engagement. We'll walk through what we've done since October. We'll be going through the priority corridors, which is also included in the community engagement, and then we'll be talking about the street typologies and modal priorities. So, as you can see, we're getting pretty close to the finish line, just a few more pieces to fill in, but we wanted to walk you through all the components. So, what's new since we were last before City Council in October? As mentioned, we completed Phases Two and Three of the community engagement. As a refresher, our community engagement approach really focused on spanning different options for doing engagement, doing engagement in many different formats, doing engagement in multiple languages. So, during Phase Two of the community engagement effort, we focused on bringing the recommended high-needs corridors out to the community for feedback. So, those were the corridors that rose to the top in terms of challenging issues with multimodal transportation. So, we did that through a number of different means. We did a fun pop-up at September nights on B Street, if we can remember all the way back till then. We did a few focus groups with parents and families at PTA meetings at Baywood and Sunnybri. We were able to do a focus group with high school students at Hillstill High School, and then a neighborhood meeting with Shoreview and Parkside neighbors. We leveraged our connections with our community leadership and our school district representatives to plan and organize those targeted focus groups and workshops. We provided Spanish-speaking support at all of the engagement events and at the focus group, and we were really excited to be able to go out in as many formats as we did. Coming into Phase Three, these meetings are likely familiar to all of you. We went throughout the city and conducted community workshops, making sure to have representation in each of our five council districts, and thank you again to all of you for attending those meetings. At those workshops, we focused on the priority corridors and the recommended improvements for each of those top ten corridors. So, we were in District Two. Districts one and five we combined, and then Districts three and five we combined, and we were grateful to be hosted at some of our local schools, and we shared information about that outreach through a number of different channels, including our city e-news, social media channels, emails to neighborhood associations, information to our schools, and then flyers that were shared with our schools as well. In conjunction with the in-person workshops, we hosted a survey on our website where we posted all of the priority corridors and the recommended improvements and provided the same opportunity for people to provide feedback on each corridor, so replicating the experience if they weren't able to join us online. And this is a word cloud of some of the information that we got. Just to note, words showing up in the word cloud means that there was general conversation around that topic. It doesn't indicate positive or negative feedback. So, coming out of all of that engagement, we were able to distill what we were hearing into a few different themes. First was safety for all modes. Connectivity was another concern, being able to get where you want to go by any means was something that was voiced frequently. Traffic congestion, we heard a lot about as well, and then accessibility for all modes. We did receive confirmation on our priority corridor selection and had good discussions around the trade-offs for each of those recommended projects. And now I'll turn it over to Carrie to step through the rest.
Thanks, Ellen. The city's many prior planning documents are packaged into corridor and neighborhood projects as shown on this map, and that project prioritization is informed by input from the council as well as community engagement. So, as Sue Ellen spoke to, we came to you all in March of last, or March earlier this year, and you agreed that safety should really be twice the weight, and that should be really well-represented in the priority scheme. That plus additional data analysis and community input led to the identification of these priority corridors, which are highlighted in yellow on the map. Council concurred on those priority corridors back in October, and then more in-depth planning and conceptual design work has been done for those ten corridors. The rest remain identified in the plan with recommendations for future implementation. For the top ten priority corridors, the plan packages together those previous projects, reconciles the different modal priorities, and defines the project elements that should be advanced for funding and implementation. And so, this results in fact sheets such as these shown in your packets. Each of the recommendations is reflective of a street type and modal priorities for each street in San Mateo. The street typologies are created based on land use and available roadway width. So, the street typology is used to then do two specific things. First, it links back to the Design Standards Manual, so that provides the details for implementation, the how of implementation. And then it also determines the modal priority for each street in San Mateo, and that can be used for future project development as well as justification for future design decisions. The land use component is a GIS-based process along with a qualitative understanding of neighborhood character. And so, what we did is essentially take the general plan land use categories, which have many different, very specific uses, and really brought them down to three groups. So, the downtown mixed-use focuses on areas with commercial storefronts on the sidewalk. The street design in these areas is really focused on the pedestrian environment, it's focused on safety, it's focused on curb management to support local businesses. The neighborhood category describes all residential areas and the public and private services that often incur within more of those residential neighborhoods too, so that may include some small businesses, schools, parks, things like that. And really, in those areas, the focus is on livability, making sure we have good different multimodal access, school access, and urban greening. And then the third category is commercial, and these really lump together office parks, industrial areas, or regional commercial areas. These generally already have more off-street parking onsite and a little bit less of a focus on the pedestrian environment, even though active transportation facilities may be provided in the area. Then the second component of the typologies is roadway widths, and so this really varies in three categories, from the narrowest of streets, what we're calling compact, to the broadest of streets, and these are literally the wide streets. The example roadway widths are shown on this slide, and just to give you a sense of how to actually think about this, if you want to imagine that two travel lanes is about twenty feet, parking is about eight feet wide, and if you start adding those together, that means that two lanes and two parking lanes is about a thirty-six-foot minimum. So, that's one of the smaller streets in San Mateo, for example. And the assigned street typologies then really guide the modal priorities, and that's what's shown on this map or this table, is how we transition between the typologies and what those modal priorities are. And so, generally, what's shown here is that with more commercial uses, we're going to see more auto-oriented modal priorities. That's probably not surprising given those uses. We'll also see some truck priority with that. In more mixed-use conditions, we may, we're going to see more bike-ped priority, and then we'll also see transit priority on wider streets, especially on the high-frequency transit corridors. And then in more residential settings, then we're going to see bicycle and pedestrian priority, and then on the very widest of those streets, we're going to see transit priority as well. And then you'll notice a gray box at the intersection of neighborhood and compact, and this is where actually most streets in San Mateo are. And these are compact neighborhood streets where we're saying the priority is safety. So, really, the imperative here is not a specific mode, it's safety for everyone traveling, no matter how you're traveling. So, whether you take transit, live, walk, bike, or play there, the priority is safety on the majority of streets in San Mateo. So, what does it look like to be a modal priority? First, let's clarify a couple things. One is that when we're saying pedestrian here, that encompasses everyone, walking, rolling, using mobility-assisted devices, regardless of their ability. So, that's an important definitional piece. And then biking here also includes micro-mobility, so for example, people on scooters, things like that. So, what does it mean to be a modal priority? Well, for pedestrians, that means we're really going to prioritize increased safety and connectivity. We're going to make sure that there's access to schools, parks, trails, and points of interest. That's the same for biking as well, but then that's also within the context of the bike network. That also may mean that there may be road diets or parking removal to actually make the bikeway fit in those situations. So, there are some clear trade-offs that may need to be made. On the auto side of things, being auto priority means that speed management will be involved in the project too. There'll also be sensitivity to impacts that may decrease throughput, but not at the expense of multimodal safety. So, we want to keep cars moving, but not at the expense of safety. And there's also a commitment to not increasing roadway capacity. On the transit side, we want to prioritize bus reliability-enhancing infrastructure. This could look like different intersection improvements. This could also look like providing a bus lane, for example, and where we have those more robust improvements such as that, again, road diets and our parking removal could be needed in those cases. It also means to be transit priority that we're going to include pedestrian and bicycle priorities, so people have to be able to get to the bus stop as well. So, that's a really important distinction from an access perspective. So, this is the resulting map. So, it's really informed by that table I was shown earlier in terms of street typology, but the final map also includes consideration of the high-frequency transit network, the bicycle network, the pedestrian network, and the fact that there's some areas of really limited roadway connectivity in San Mateo, so especially the east-west connectivity across 101 is a consideration in the final version of this map. As I mentioned before, that you'll see that most of the streets in San Mateo are in fact that gray color, which is the safety priority of the neighborhood compact streets. And so, what you're seeing mapped in this different color coding is the different modal priorities that are proposed as part of the plan, and these are designated on the major streets in San Mateo. So, lastly, here, I just want to walk you through a few examples of what that means in real life, looking at some examples. So, when we say that residential streets will prioritize safety for people regardless of how they travel and will continue to accommodate and support driving, obviously, what does that mean? So, this might look like using some of the following tools that'll be included in the Design Standards Manual. First, it would look like daylighting and red curbs, so making sure that there's good sightlines between drivers of the major street and drivers of the minor street, or drivers and pedestrians, and that's actually now state law as well, so that's important to realize as well. It'll also look like crosswalk safety enhancements, that could be like high-visibility crosswalk markings shown here, flashing beacons, things like that. It may also look like more proactive traffic calming, so helping to make sure that there's slower speeds on a lot of these neighborhood streets as well. So, on one of our slightly wider streets, for example, Alameda de las Pulgas, is proposed to prioritize bicycle and pedestrian travel over bus and auto travel while still accommodating and supporting bus and auto travel. So, what might that look like? The proposal here would be to look at crosswalk safety enhancements up and down the corridor, making sure that those are done consistently and systemically, looking at bicycle facilities. Looking at bicycle facilities. This is an example here of what that kind of configuration could look like on a similar street such as Alameda with the median. And then that still means that there'll be bus stop enhancements as well. And so wanting to make sure that the design prioritizes safe interactions between people crossing over to get to the bus, people just walking in the area, and people biking as well, as well as safe interactions between the bus vehicle itself and bicyclists and pedestrians. And then lastly, on one of the wider streets, roadways like the east portion of Hillsdale Boulevard will prioritize automobile and bicycle connectivity east-west across 101 while still promoting, while still supporting transit connectivity. So that's going to be accomplished through a couple of things. First is signal optimization. So this will really shows that we're trying to make sure that we're keeping cars moving on Hillsdale. That'll also have benefits for the bus. So that has a variety of different kind of co-benefits. Want to make sure that multimodal intersection safety is really a key element here that will include making sure that bikes can turn on to and off of the bike network successfully and that there's just good bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure there to make sure that there's safe crossings with separation space and time. And then also that there are separated bicycle facilities as proposed in the bike plan. And so pulling that through as part of this recommendation as well. Now I'm going to pass it back to Suellen to talk about the feedback from the commission.
Thanks, Carrie. We brought this information to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission last month, I believe. Time flies. And received some feedback on the items that were presented. Some of the high-level feedback was that biking and bicycle and auto connectivity on those east-west connectors across major barriers like 101 is important for circulation, but recognize that they're maybe difficult with limited roadway availability. Second note was being mindful of potential parking removal early in the projects and identifying that as early as possible. Maintaining north and south access into the downtown is important. Commissioners supported all of the modal prioritizations, but primarily unanimously supported safety for all modes on our neighborhood streets. And then there was some feedback to consider a second-tier priority for modal priority for bicycles on El Camino, if possible. So in terms of next steps, as noted, we've almost reached the finish line here on this project. We have a few more items to bring to City Council, likely later this summer, early fall. And then looking at bringing a draft plan to council in the fall or winter of 2024. So with that, we will bring you back to the questions that we have for council. So first, does council have feedback on how the street typologies were developed? Second, does council have feedback on how modal priorities were assigned to each street typology? And then finally, does council have feedback on the resulting modal priorities map? There's no action requested from council tonight, just general feedback specifically on those three questions, if you don't mind. And with that, we'll conclude the staff presentation. And Carrie and I are available for questions.
Thank you very much for all the work that's been going on and all the community outreach. This is not an easy project. That's an understatement, but we really appreciate it. So let me turn it over and see if we have any public comment on this topic.
Yes, Madam Mayor. At this time, I do not have any request to speak on this item. If you wish to speak on this item and you are in chambers, please provide me with the request to speak slip. If you are attending remotely, please raise your hand. I'll give you just a few moments to do so. Madam Mayor, we have no request to speak on this item.
Okay, well, then we will close public comment. Thank you very much. And let us turn to questions, comments, and feedback from council. Who would like to start us off? Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you through the mayor. Thank you, Suellen and staff, for the presentation. I did want to ask about kind of what was brought up in the commission related to a second-tier priority for bicycles in, on El Camino Real. I just wanted to ask, Suellen, I've heard that there's a burgeoning movement to, you know, with cities on the peninsula to potentially take advantage of Caltrans considering repaving our sort of stretch of El Camino Real and potentially trying to get separated bike lanes on El Camino Real during that time. Could you maybe speak to what, you know, what you've heard and know about this process and how, you know, whether the current recommendation by staff would take us out of the conversation to consider something like that?
Sure, I can speak to what I knew about that process and then ask Carrie to fill in with Farr and Pierce's work in other jurisdictions. We are aware of an effort to do a significant repaving of El Camino in the 2028 timeframe. Caltrans has reached out to the city to ask what improvements we have in our adopted plans that we would like to include in that project. But we're not aware of any push from Caltrans perspective on implementing Class IV separated bike lane throughout the region or even within the city. Along that regard, the city is about to begin working on a project in coordination with Samtrans, Belmont, and San Carlos on looking at El Camino and multimodal access and transit access along El Camino. So I think in that process, we'll see a little bit more coalescing around how transit service can be provided along El Camino in our three cities. But in terms of a larger effort by a number of cities, we're, I'm not aware of that specifically.
Yeah, and there often can be interest in those paving projects and trying to tie them together. So I know that other cities, but not necessarily contiguous cities, are looking at that. So would be curious to hear more about that. And then if there is a paving opportunity, too, I mean, that could be something that could incorporate the project recommendations as is, such as looking at more robust transit improvements. So there could be some options there. And that is something that's following the instruction of the general plan, too.
Thank you, Carrie. And sorry for not saying your name along with Suellen's there. I will do that from now on. I guess to try and follow up on that, I guess I'm curious if staff's maybe thoughts on the idea of having bicycling as a secondary priority with the idea that if such a opportunity came, you know, if, for example, Belmont and Burlingame, you know, among other cities, were considering some kind of bicycle improvements as a result of this ongoing work and the repaving, you know, could we, you know, would it be possible for us to indicate something of a, you know, a secondary priority while, you know, indicating this primary priority for what you were just describing with Reimagine Samtrans? And maybe I'll leave it there.
If council wished to establish a secondary priority, we could look at how that would be accomplished. I would like to note, however, with maintaining pedestrian and transit priority on El Camino in support of the Reimagine Samtrans effort, our, you know, current El Camino bus route is about 15 minutes headway, which is quite frequent. And they're looking to enhance that service along El Camino. And so this transit priority would really enhance that experience and make transit much more viable for our residents. The proposal that's currently in the corridor improvement would necessitate using a existing vehicle travel lane and making that a transit lane. So, you know, then you would be down, you would have one transit lane and two vehicle travel lanes essentially on El Camino. In order to then establish a separated bike lane on El Camino, the decision would have to be made to either remove a second vehicle travel lane or to remove parking in order to make room along El Camino to have that separated bike lane. You also need to be considering access for businesses and access to the multitude of driveways and all of the intersections along El Camino while you're designing that facility. So I would just offer that for consideration during evaluation of that secondary priority.
Thank you. And could you maybe just remind me of the timeline for the Samtrans, Reimagine Samtrans project you were describing?
We are, we received grant funding. We just heard from Samtrans to get that effort kicked off. So that's a Transit Priorities Initiative grant. And that work should be starting in the next few months. But I don't have any firm date or timeline yet.
Okay, thank you. I did have one question about the, looking at the map of the priority quarters and the different colors we have to show the different priorities, particularly with the autofocus priority ones. Because I feel like outside of a couple of thoroughfares that I, you know, I think makes sense for autos and trucks, like Amphit Boulevard, for example, I feel like we also have a few kind of small squiggly lines, such as like around the Hillsdale Inn area. And let's see what I was recalling. I guess, yeah, like around what looks like 25th Avenue-ish area on the west side of El Camino, over a Clearview Way way in the west by 92 there. And I guess I was just curious if you could say a little more about what that represents and how it fits with like the other colors and roadways around it.
Yeah, you'll notice that there's very few of just the automobile priorities, too. And so these are primarily streets where predominantly the uses were very auto-oriented in nature. So a lot of like auto body shops, things like that, generally speaking. Some of those are kind of more service alleys that you're seeing as like the tiniest squiggles on the map. And that really are about like parking and direct business access where maybe where they're taking loading, things like that. So that's typically what they are. I would be happy to answer more specific questions on individual streets, too.
Yeah, I think, I think those are some of the more salient questions. And thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Hedges.
Thank you. This is a great presentation. Could you bring the map back up again for me as well? So I have some questions and comments. So back to El Camino. I actually got a call from Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition last week. And what I'm going to say about that and question you about it is that I think in order to do what I'm thinking about, we'd have to have a meeting the minds of all the cities because doing it in one city really wouldn't make a lot of sense. So I'm glad to see your agreement on that. What I'd be willing to do is to remove one lane each way for bus transit and mix it with a bicycle lane there. I don't think there's any reason to separate it because you got no cars in it in 15 minutes between buses. So I would not be against removing any parking. I think we've got a situation now in the city where it's created a lot of angst for one of our communities. And I don't want to relive that. So what do you think about that idea? As long as we could get other cities to go along with it? Because the El Camino bus is probably the best headways in the region, actually.
Yeah, it's definitely one of the best in terms of highest frequency routes. So, yeah, some studies, some places do allow for the shared use of bicyclists and buses in the lane. Is that, that's what you're proposing?
Yes.
Yeah. And so oftentimes, that simply won't be enforced, that bicyclist can't be in there or it'll just, you know, place where bicyclists might be by default. With 15-minute headways, you know, you can do the math there to think about how often you might encounter a bus passing you in that case, if you're a bicyclist. And so I think the, probably the main piece is that they're just quite different in terms of the quality and comfort from most bicyclist perspectives. Well, for some, it may be fine to have the bus lane if you're a really confident rider. For others, and for probably most people, it's not going to feel as comfortable as having that separated bikeway, which is what some of the advocacy groups like SBC are interested in.
My first four years here, I rode a bicycle everywhere. And I avoided El Camino. I usually use Sematel Drive going north and south. So I bring that up because there's no way we're taking two lanes out each way. That's never going to happen. And I don't think it'd be wise to do that. So the other question I have for you now, which is a hot issue in my, in my district, is I'm looking at what I think is 90, under the 92 along 19th Avenue in Fashion Island. And I see green only part of the way. But I know from being on the TA and going through the plans there that we're actually planning from over by the corp yard all the way to Mariners Island with the bike lanes. So it looks like the red is automobile only from just past 101. So is that correct or has the change, the plans changed?
So specifically for 19th Avenue and Fashion Island? Can you, ah, the mouse works. So you've got bike-
That's what I'm looking at, yes.
Bike and pedestrian priority here. And then it switches to automobile and bike priority because this is one of those connection options east-west. So that continues to be a bike priority along with allowing for auto priority as well going eastward. So we are still, we are actually making good headway on that 19th Avenue Fashion Island project with the TA currently. That hasn't changed. I think right here, the red is where the park-and-ride is and where it kind of dead ends.
So I'm sure you're familiar with what's going on on the east side. We've got some high-trafficked businesses coming into Bridgepoint with Chick-fil-A, Benihana's, and Nordstrom's. And right now, the parking lot's full every day and not just on the weekends. I know because I can see it from my house. So this corridor, along with what Fashion Island's done, or what Fosse City's done with the no-left-hand turns, is really very heavily used and it's going to get a lot heavier. So I'm full square for the bike lanes, but we have to do some work on some intersections, too.
If I can, through the mayor, if I can speak to that. As part of the 19th Avenue Fashion Island project, we are maintaining all of the vehicle lanes and we're also doing intersection improvements with signal improvements as well.
Yeah, that's, that's very important. Our city manager, when he first came here going to a meeting on the east side, made the mistake of taking that route and was late for the meeting. So I get it all the time from residents and my constituents. And part of that intersection then backs up no folk. So people that have to take kids to daycare and things like that get really excited about the traffic over there. So those are my questions now as I listen to other council people. And if later on you want to bring up the questions you want us to respond to, I'll respond to those as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lee, do you have any comments?
I thought the input from the commission was very thorough. I'm also interested in consideration for the, for bike lanes on El Camino. And particularly because I, if that is, if there is a way to make that happen, I think that it could be very impactful for the implementation of the Bicycle Master Plan and potentially look at future redesign that would retain more parking in the neighborhoods, which I think would be a great benefit to citywide, particularly in neighborhoods like mine in North Central. So I'm interested in learning more about what those options could be. And, you know, if there's an opportunity to further explore and examine that in conjunction with, you know, the developments that are happening regionally. So that's generally my feedback. Thank you for an excellent presentation.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor.
First off, thank you for a great presentation. Just a couple of things to touch on. So I take my kids to school every day from my neighborhood across the El Camino Real to Burrell and Aragon. Next year, it'll just be Aragon. Yes. One, one thing that I also sit on the commission, or I'm a liaison between the school district- school district. And one thing that I've noticed is that, you know, much to the chagrin of many parents in San Mateo and Foster City, the high school and the elementary and middle schools are not on the same calendar. So there's almost four weeks where we only have high schools, it's almost four, only four weeks where we have, you know, two weeks at the beginning of the summer where elementary and middle schools are still in session. And then the other way, the high schools start two weeks earlier. So there's a full month. So it just kind of occurred to me this morning, when I thought, wow, this normally takes 18 minutes, and now it only takes seven to get to Burrell only. Do we, we don't measure during the summer, or do we, or do we? Do we use those, those, those kind of gaps to gauge how many people are going to high school, how many people are going to middle school and elementary? Do we, do we use any of that data?
If you're, if you're asking about general, you know, traffic volumes and speed data, we don't collect them during the summer or any school holidays.
Okay. Well, it, it might be, just for reference, it might be interesting to use the, you know, those two weeks, the beginning and end, to see how much traffic is high school related and how much is middle and elementary related. Because I can tell you, it's pretty significant. And it also comes to something that I've heard a lot about, which is, you know, Foster City has no high schools. So to kind of reiterate what Councilmember Hedges said, there's, there's a lot of concern about the east-west direction of traffic. I talked to my peers on the Foster City, City Council, and they tell me, you know, it's a huge headache for all the Foster City parents to get their kids to school. And it has a huge impact on us. I've also told them that if they put up any more no right turn lanes, we're going to declare war on Foster City.
We should do it now.
I think we should, you know, all kidding aside on that, if, if there are things that we're finding are impacting our traffic because of their decisions, I think I'd like to have conversations with them about that. So if we have any data like that, it would be interesting to have. I noticed on the street typology, topologies map, that there aren't very many red, because San Mateo doesn't have a lot of commercial. But one of the impacts I hear a lot about in my district is, you know, we have, in my district in particular, we have several neighborhoods where there are the car and auto mechanics. And so something to keep in mind, and I know you're already doing this, but just of note, is that keep an eye on trap, like parking and, and kind of traffic around those, those areas, using Amphlett and Clermont as examples, right close to home. As we, as we plan, like, let's make sure that we're, we're looking at it. Also, we, we probably, as a city, need to try to help them look for solutions to having off-street parking, because, you know, on Delaware Street near Sunnybury School, there are often several cars that are parked for the auto body shops and mechanics that are taking up space around the school and really adding to that congestion problem that we have, which of course adds to a safety concern. And then the last thing was, you know, there are two Caltrans projects that are a little distressing in, in that, you know, they, they want to have express lanes to nowhere, which takes basically off the express lanes of 101 and, and on to 92. But once they get on 92, they're not connecting with anything. So, you know, at first, my, my peers in Foster City were like, yeah, we need to do this, because we need to fix 92. But as we, as many of us looked at it, I, I'm concerned that that's actually going to make the situation more dire for us as a city, because people are going to be having to get off of 92 and being, using the front of droves even more. So I just asked that, you know, obviously, we can't control what Caltrans does, but if you can help us have data and try to, to, you know, corral them in, if it's going to hurt, harm our cities, please bring that to our attention. That's all I have, other than, you know, yes on anything we can do with El Camino Real to make it more multi-modal, thank you. And, and then safe crossings on El Camino Real. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Let's see, what can I add to all the comments and questions so far? The one question I have related to, does council have feedback on the typologies were developed? Could you share with us specifically what outreach or engagement has gone on with the disabilities community? Because I've heard from a number of people that it's, number one, it's a difficult community to work with, but, or to solicit input from. And how do we make sure that their very important input is considered at all stages now and going forward?
In phase one of the community engagement, we started off with one-on-one stakeholder interviews. And one of the entities that was selected for the interview was the County Paratransit Coordinating Council. And so they were helpful in providing feedback on how to engage with the community. In terms of how it specifically was brought forward throughout the plan, we don't have that earmarked specifically. But in looking at the different networks and the different modes, looking at how accessibility can be utilized by those with any mobility concerns, or who are differently abled, was first and foremost in looking at pedestrian improvements, et cetera. Carrie, do you have anything to add?
Just that in the needs analysis as well, the ADA transition plan was specifically used as an input. And so we do have good data underlying that, as well as the planning process used by the city to create that document, that is, informs the priority projects coming out of this plan as well.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add on through the mayor. I think there might be just more opportunities to engage specifically the community, you know, community with accessibility issues. And, you know, Ferrin Pierce did mention the ADA transition plan. There's a requirement in there where you have to have community meetings. But additionally, the Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities is also located here in the city of San Mateo. And I think there's an opportunity to get in front of them, along with our seniors as well. We had a wonderful lunch, Director Fabian and myself going over to the senior center over at the King Center. And there's just opportunity to actually get the seniors all in one spot at the end of their lunch, to engage further. So I think that there's more opportunities in the future.
Thank you. I would strongly encourage that, as I'm sure you would as well. But for people of all ages, so, so, so important. My next question is, you know, obviously, parking, lack thereof, how it happens, is removed, comes back, has been a huge topic throughout, it always is, but particularly through this. So what have you learned through the development of this plan about how to approach what is a very critical need for people, but also to enable the plans to go forward and the bikes and pedestrians and everyone else to be able to advance? And how, how is what you're learning affecting how you're approaching project, the project going forward? It's just a big question, you know?
We're fighting over answering it. For this plan, I think that we first and foremost wanted to identify very clearly what the trade-offs were for any corridor improvements that we were looking at. For, you know, in, in looking at the Design Standards Manual and specific facility design, you know, that, that's one thing in how you design a facility. But when we were looking at the 10 priority corridors and identifying those improvements, there was really key directive, was identifying the trade-offs as early as possible. So for any improvements where potential parking removal would need to be considered, we've identified that upfront. And that's earlier on in the planning process, planning and design process than we have previously. And so being able to clearly provide that information as part of the consideration of the corridor improvements was really important to the project team, in order to allow residents, elected and appointed officials to really weigh the recommendations, knowing what the, the potential trade-offs were. I think we also went into the development of the priority corridors with looking at all options. So there is really a focus on, you know, doing whatever is possible in order to not remove a travel lane, or to not remove parking, or doing so as minimally as possible. And trying to be as conservative as we can while still keeping the focus on safety for all roadway users. Carrie, did you add anything?
Yeah, I just really appreciated the kind of transparency of that. I mean, you saw that in your packets, you were at the workshops, you saw that kind of shown on the boards, clearly what the, those trade-offs were. And I think the other thing I appreciate about the workshops is just the neighbor-to-neighbor conversations about the trade-offs, where we saw all sides of the spectrum of opinions about what, which, which way should you go with the trade-off. But I think there was good dialogue there, and people were able to kind of see that and actually speak to it in conversation with one another.
Yeah. And I would just strongly encourage continuation of that outreach, and really talking about what could that mean? Because identifying it early is great, but then you have to communicate it, and, and then talk about what are the options. And in terms of, I don't know quite where this fits in the, the three questions, but we talk about transit in terms of buses. But what about east-west shuttles? And the whole idea of trying to get, because one of the things I'm always hearing is, it's great that we've got Caltrain going north and south, but I need to go east-west, or I've got to go diagonal. And it just, the big buses and the trains don't do it for me. So how are you including thoughts about those shuttles in your, in your planning?
At present, the city does not have any plans to look at operation of shuttles of that nature. So shuttles that would be provided in the near term would likely be funded by private development. We do, of course, have the commute.org commuter shuttles that run. And it's possible in the future that routes for that may change or be modified. But in, I think that through the process of developing the Complete Streets Plan, we can identify really where the bottlenecks are and where the key issues are. Even before that, we knew east-west connectivity was an issue. So if there is an opportunity to be looking at, at a shuttle in the future, I think that we're very aware that the east-west connectivity is the highest need. So while it wasn't specifically identified in the Complete Streets Plan, it is something that I think would, would be the obvious solution if there were a shuttle available in the future.
Yeah, I, I would maybe encourage you to put it down in the plan, because you know it in your head and your heart. But this is a living document that will hopefully go on long after all of us are on to other things. So, thank you. Okay. Any other questions before we, or comments before we go through the three questions? No? Okay, so, let's-
Just one comment.
Yeah.
So, when we were doing Bay Meadows and the corridor plan, one of the things I recommended on shuttles was a shuttle that circulates from what's now 28th Street, up to the Alameda, down Alameda, and then through the neighborhoods, back to 25th, and through that, and then back to Delaware, and into 28th Street. If, if, we would have to start out with only peak times to see if it works. But that's fairly dense area of housing, it might actually work. So if we're going to do a shuttle, let's think about that.
Okay. So does anyone have feedback on the first question, how the street typologies were developed? Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you, Mayor. If, do you want to go one at a time, or?
Yeah, why don't we do it one at a time?
Well, I'll, I'll just say, I actually don't have a lot of particular feedback on the typologies and how they're developed. I, I think it makes sense. And overall, I'm aligned.
Okay. Does anyone have other comments on that one? No? Okay. My only comment is the, the disability community, making sure. Okay, number two, do, do we have any feedback on how model priorities were assigned to each street typology? Is that a yes, Councilmember Hedges?
Yeah, I think I was okay with it. I just want to make it clear again, my position on with these models, especially with bicycles, not taking out parking, especially in the denser, older neighborhoods. That's it for me.
Okay. Thank you. And thirdly-
Through the mayor.
Yeah, yes.
I, I would just note, I, I think, one small note about the concept of neighborhood streets, being kind of this gray area for safety, is, you know, I, I think I can get behind it on a high level for most of the city. But of course, I think, I just wanted to note that some neighborhood streets are currently kind of de facto priority bike ped right now. I think Palm Avenue would be an example. Especially, you know, as we await bike ped improvements that we'd like to implement on some of these corridors, we, you know, folks may elect to take streets that just kind of feel safer, if you will, or, or may have less traffic. And so I, I think, I just felt like that was perhaps worth mentioning. And I think, yeah, I guess I mentioned, if I'm still, I feel like, I guess I'll, I'll be keeping an eye on future milestones with, with the plan to, to get a better sense of how the auto priority and, and commercial streets will, will work well in, in some of the, the smaller spots. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I gave you most of my feedback with my questions, but just to reiterate, to keep an eye on the commercials areas that kind of impact the local neighborhood areas, especially around schools, and the parking impacts of automotive and partial. Thanks.
Okay. And any final feedback on the resulting model priorities map itself?
I do.
Yes.
Okay, here's where I have a, a comment or two. Thank you, Mayor. One is, I, I think, could I maybe see the map while we? Thank you, sorry. I think it would be helpful. I guess I could bring up my own map, but that's all right. Thank you. Great. So I was thinking about, oh, well, over at, I, I just wanted to note, this is sort of maybe a broader comment about the east-west connections, particularly over 101. And then, but I think, when I think of Third Avenue, for example, we have a, a bike ped crossing over 101 from Norfolk to Humboldt. And so to me, I feel like that has a ped component. I'm not sure if we exactly have that indicated, but to me, I think that on the other crossings in purple, yeah, like, more so, of course, Hillsdale Boulevard. But perhaps also Fashion Island. But I'm, I'm thinking mainly with Hillsdale. I, I would, I feel like we need to have a ped component in, in that corridor. It's, I, and, and it doesn't exactly have to mirror the Third Avenue solution. But I, I do think that, of course, like longer term, we've been kind of looking at and, and talking about a kind of Hillsdale bike ped bridge over 101. And I just think, like, yes, you know, we want bicycles to be able to cross, but of course, we want pedestrians to have some, some more access than they currently do as well. And I think that would be very helpful for so many people in that area, from Casa de Campo La Selva, to, you know, the folks who might live in, like, Lake Shore, Bay Meadows, and, and Hillsdale and more. So that's, that's a huge corridor. And I'll just make a kind of soft pitch as well for the importance of considering that particular amenity on Hillsdale as a longer-term project that I hope we can complete. I did want to just mention that I, I like the idea of just some sort of, keeping the door open in some way, if possible, related to a, a bike possibility on, on El Camino Real, in case there are opportunities to leverage Caltrans' street repaving for bike access that would happen to cross multiple cities. I, I do think, especially from like the presentation that came before the SIC, and some of the deliberation that went on, and, and then, that I think, you know, what, what staff is recommending and what's in the cut sheet for El Camino Real, I think makes sense to me, and is a, is the best fit for the city of San Mateo at this time. And, and I think what, what we're hearing from some advocates and, and other members of the public and cyclists, of course, is, is, you know, the, the hopes for a multi-city solution that might be, you know, an ideal best fit for a broader stretch of more than just the city of San Mateo. And so I, I don't, you know- And so I, I don't, you know, I, I, I'm, I, I feel like if, it, it would be great if we could, if, if that once in a decade, you know, generation opportunity does seem to be coming together, I'm hoping we can be part of the conversation, basically. I think there are a lot of benefits if, if we could do something. And I'm thinking specifically, you know, Councilmember Hedges brought it up, a, a potential idea, and I think we've had some discussion on what it could look like. In my mind at the moment, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm hoping that there might be a possibility like California Drive on, in Burlingame, where, you know, they've recently put in a separated bike lane that has transit islands. And I believe in South San Francisco, they've also demoed this. And so I, I, I'm holding out hope that there might be a possibility to do both of what the, the city is hoping to accomplish with, with increased transit access and potentially having a, a great north-south bike amenity. As Councilmember Lee noted, I, you know, if we were able to accomplish something like that, it could allow for us to reevaluate other parts of the bike ped network and, and perhaps put less intensity toward adding or converting bike facilities onto neighborhood and compact streets. So there's a potential benefit there. I do feel like overall, I, I would like, you know, El Camino feels like a complete street for all, you know, like if there were another color, I think earlier there was a color that was kind of ped auto and bike, or ped transit and bike, rather. And to me, like to, ideally, that's what El Camino would represent because it does kind of need to serve everybody. Also, I, I want to just point out that Norfolk, I got a, a bigger appreciation for Norfolk when looking at this map because on the east side in the Shoreview neighborhood, it, it really is an important north-south path. And, but I will say, in looking at the cut sheet, even though it's currently designated as, I think, like a ped transit priority, it notes in the cut sheet that it does have bike lanes now, which of course it does, and that there's even some interest in bike improvements there. So that's great because for cyclists, that's really the only way to get from north to south in a, in a reasonable manner. So El Camino and Norfolk, both kind of like complete streets for all in my mind. I had some other language about why I think El Camino could be that, but I, I feel like I've said enough. And I'll, I'll just make a quick point, hopefully, that e-bikes have the potential to change use and demand for bike improvements in our city. And it is real and I bought a new one and it's really awesome and it's, it's really different. I can go 25 miles an hour on this thing and I'm now taking trips to, I'm, I'm now a bike commuter more than I was before. I'm going to South San Francisco and back. It's 25 mile trips that are made easier and, and, you know, better through this option that I think people are going to start adopting. So there was some conversation in the SIC meeting about this and, and I believe it. I, I'm, I think, you know, what we can invest in, in keeping the door open to possibilities like what we discussed will, will be rewarding because I do believe in the future, we will be able to mode shift a bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hedges.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of comments and a suggestion. So Measure A and Measure W allow for monies on a two-year cycle for bus, or for bike lanes and improvements. I think it's about $7.5 million on a two-years, that, that I think ends up being about $15 million on a two-year cycle, about $7.5 million a year. Way back, the bike lanes on San Mateo Drive came before the TA and we voted for that. And then the next set was for California Drive, Burlingame. So it takes those all the way from our downtown Cal, Caltrain station to the Melbury station, which was a major improvement in safety for bikers, which I was, in fact, I went to the TA meeting and tried to convince them to do both those in one, because sometimes Scanlon would actually find more money. And so, but it wasn't to be that time, but we did get it the next year round. But I want to go back to the history of what happened on the bike overcross. You realize that we tried once before to get the money from the TA. Now, have you ever walked over the Hillsdale Bridge over 101? Because I used to commute from Caltrain on foot from there. There, when, coming off of the freeway, going south or north, that traffic comes so fast and there's no light for pedestrians. And there's a curve, so you have to take your life in your hands to cross there, because I've taken my life in my hands to cross there. So one of the reasons we didn't get the funding originally, and this is just a note of caution from history, is that the city council that signed decided to, to develop a signature entrance to the city of San Mateo with that bridge. It was far too expensive than it had to be and it was destined to fail because the TA wasn't going to spend that kind of money on it. So we need, need to find something that's just utilitarian and get some safety across there for pedestrians and bikers. Thank you, that's it.
So through the mayor?
Yes.
I'm just looking if there's any other comments about the map so we can keep moving the item forward.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Does anybody else have anything?
I have one thing. Just wanted to say two things. One, I said one thing and then two things, nice. First, I support Councilmember Lorraine's comments about Hillsdale. I definitely would like us to, to look at that as a priority, to have a safe crossing for pedestrians and cyclists. And two, throughout Europe, along every rail line, almost every rail line throughout most of Europe, they have a two-lane, they call them bike freeways that, that run parallel to. And as Caltrain continues, and you know, some of this is still not going to happen anytime soon, but as we continue to move down towards grade separations, you know, I, I hope that we'll continue to look at the idea of maybe having a bike path, double bike path that runs along the rail corridor. If you look north, South City and Melbury already have a pretty well-developed one. Burlingame doesn't and we don't. But, but even if you look at where we've done our, our, our new crossings, grade separations in Southern San Mateo, there's definitely space now that we could probably pull off that. It's just we couldn't get through downtown. But I would like us to, just in the big picture, kind of keep that idea as a, as a concept that we could embrace, hopefully, before I die. Thank you.
All right, on that happy note, thank you very much.
I'm good, me too.
Did you get what you needed?
I'm mostly, through the mayor, I just wanted to confirm, I think I heard some coalescing around looking at a secondary priority on El Camino and I just wanted to confirm that, okay. Great, that's great. Thank you so much for all your time.
Thank you. Okay, do we need to take a five-minute break or do you want to push on?
If one person needs, we all do.
Okay.
Five-minute break.
Five-minute break. Let's take it. Okay, five minutes.
I thought there'd be at least one of us.
All right, we're moving on to item number 16, fiscal year 2024-25 proposed budget and 2429 capital improvement program review. Finance Director Huang, welcome and thank you very much.
My name is Karen Huang. I'm the finance director with the city of San Mateo. The item in front of you tonight is the proposed 2024-25 city budget and the 2429 five-year CIP program. First off, our agenda tonight, we are going to provide you a, a high-level overview of our budget process and some of the highlights. And then we'll dive right into our proposed budget for city and the general fund proposed budget and its long-term plan. Then we'll follow by the 2024-25 capital budget and the five-year CIP plan. At the end, we'll mention what's the challenge this year for developing the budget and some of our financial sustainability actions. Just a little bit about how we got here today. In January, we have a budget kickoff and on February 20th, we provided the council with a mid-year financial updates of our current fiscal year. And back in April, on April 15th, we provided a budget preview for both of our operating budget and the capital budget. And, and here we are on June, June 3rd, it's our first public hearing for our proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And two weeks from now, we'll bring this item back to you for the second public hearing and ask for your final review and budget adoption. Some of the highlight of the budget is that 2024-25, it's actually the first year of the two-year budget cycle. The city is on a two-year budget cycle, meaning we, we ask department to provide their two-year spending plan and then we'll adopt the first one. On the second year, we'll come back with some amendments, but the second year is going to focus on the CIP. And as I mentioned, this is the first year of our two-year cycle, so the primary focus of, of this budget season is actually on our operating budget. Our citywide operating budget is then at 256.1 million and the CIP proposed budget is 65.2 million for 2425. And the five-year CIP total is 240 million and we'll talk about that later in the next slide. So let's, let's take a look at the citywide budget. We are proposing the citywide budget at 321.3 million. As you can see, the blue color on the pie chart, it's our operating budget and the yellow is our capital budget. So about 80% of our citywide total budget this year, it go to our operations and 20% go into CIP. Now, let's take a look at our general fund summary. We have presented to the council on April 15th, a preview, which is, at that time, we don't have everything finalized yet, but we have some preliminary number and we would like to give the council a preview, what it's like at that time, while staff is- while staff is still trying to finalize the budget. I want to mention to you what is new in the proposed budget, what is the difference compared to what you have seen back in April. So we adjusted our general fund revenue assumption and incorporated the latest information we have. So our property tax actually is going to do better than our forecast that we provided to you back in April. And also, we mentioned high interest rate environment actually have a cooling effect on our tax revenue. But it also have a positive thing, which is bumping up our investment earning. So we made an adjustment on our investment earning as well. And that's the two major driving force why our new projection on general fund revenue is higher than the April projection. On the expenditure-wise, it also went up compared to the number we presented to you back in April. One of the reasons is that we adjusted our assumption of vacancy. The one that we provided to you back in April is based on a higher vacancy assumption. And when we developed this proposed budget, we adjust our vacancy assumption to 2% for our safety employee and 5% for our non-safety employee. And also, we incorporated our labor negotiation, the latest approved MOU and ongoing negotiation, and put the best guess that we can put together and provided a new projection on our expenditures. Moving on, this is our general fund revenue. As you can see, the largest general fund revenue is our property tax, which accounts for almost half of our general fund revenue. And combining with our second largest revenue sales tax and followed by real property transfer tax, TOT business tax, all these tax revenue combined, it's about 80% of our general fund revenue, meaning our operation is heavily rely on tax revenue. And they make up most of our funding source for the general fund's operation, which is to fund all our core service for the city. And the general fund's projection for our 2425 total revenue is currently stand at 169.8 million. Major revenue, as I mentioned earlier, our property taxes are going to do a little better than the original thing. Back in April, my projection is that the annual growth is about 3%, but lately, based on our county assessor's office latest information, it's going to be around 3.5 and 4%. We will know for sure around July 1st, once we have the number locked in. So we'll keep an eye on that. And if we need to come back and adjust our revenue, we will do that. And then other than that, sales tax, real property transfer tax and TOT, the assumption is the same. There's no change compared to the one that we presented to you in April. Majority of all the other revenue are going to stay flat. That's our projection. Mostly, other revenue, general fund revenue are going to stay flat with moderate increase. So that's the challenge that we are going to talk about later at the end of this presentation. VLF is always a concern. One of the things that I want to give the council an update on is that in our coming fiscal year 2425, our 100% VLF is projecting at 6.2 million if we don't have funding issue. And because we are projecting a shortfall about $6 million, so the funding available for us is only at 10.2 million. And then the VLF shortfall that we keep talking about, it's actually the shortfall from two years ago, from fiscal year 2223. And that's the one that we keep fighting for and our county and cities and our state representative have been advocating for us is this 4.2 million from two years ago. And the good news is that our house, we just got the news on Wednesday, May 29, our colleague from the county, they said both the House and Senate in Sacramento have included our county-wise 70 million VLF shortfall in their joint announced two-party deal. And hopefully, that's a really promising news. But it's not final yet. But it looks really promising that we are going to get the 4.2 million. But what about the $6 million shortfall from our projection that is for two years later? It means that every single year, this VLF shortfall will become something that we will have to bring back to you. And it just becomes something you will never go away until we find a long-term solution. So with that, we are projecting our next year's VLF is the available VLF for 2425 combined with the $4.2 million that we are likely going to get. So it's projecting at 14.4 million. Our general fund's expenditure is standing at 180.4 million for the upcoming fiscal year. As you can see, over 55% of our operations is spent on public safety. And the rest, we have it for our parks and recreation, library, public works, community development, and city administration. We also have included here 11.6 million transfer out, which included our 4.4 million from general fund contribution to CIP, $3.7 million from Measure S contribution to CIP. And the rest is mainly for our debt service. Moving on to our general fund long-term plan. This is something that we have discussed back in April, where we built a long-range forecast for the general fund and see where we are standing in a long period of time, whether we can financially sustain our operation. And this one is built on the middle ground scenario, where we project the state is going to somehow come up with a compromise with the city and county. And the VLF will eventually become more stable and more projectable. Instead of right now, we just don't know, year by year, we just don't know whether we are going to get the money or not. So this one is based on that assumption. And we are assuming that we'll get VLF every single year, but at a reduced level to be conservative with our projection. And property tax is projecting at 4% annual increase in this long-range forecast. As you can see, we'll experience multiple years deficit. This year, in general funds forecast, we are projecting a $10.5 million deficit. And the next year, it's another 12 million. And the year after is 11. And it just keep going. As you can see on the right-hand side, our general fund total fund balance, including all the reserve, rainy day, 25% operating reserve, housing set aside, everything, is at about 99 million, right? That will keep going down if we keep drawing on it and we keep experiencing deficit every single year. It draw down actually quite fast. And at year four, in this 10-year forecast, you will see that the total fund balance, the blue bar here, it's just enough to make our 20% operating reserve. And into year five, we will not be able to meet our 25% operating reserve. So if we don't do something and we don't start planning, our general fund reserve will be gone in no time. So something has to be done between now and in the next couple of years. Okay, the next one is not my area, but I would give it a try. And if there's any questions relating to specific CIP projects, I would defer that to our Public Work Director, Matt Fabi. He needs to help me out. But I'll go over this CIP budget quickly for you. For our next fiscal year 2425, the proposed capital budget is total at 65.2 million. And combined, all five years in this five-year program, it's 240 million. The CIP preview we presented to you back in April, I think the number is higher. And because the number that we presented to you about one month ago, it's all the funding that we wanted, that we wanted to do. But looking at our funding source, we don't have the funding to do everything we wanted. So in this proposed budget and this final five-year CIP plan, the funding, we have to look at what we can afford to do. So the dollar amount is reduced compared to the one that you saw back in April. Something that we want to highlight is the annual baseline contribution from our general fund and Measure S funding is set at 7.25. But this year, thanks to our public works staff, they really do a deep dive and found projects that can be closed out and release funding. And we found $2 million there. So this year, we including our annual baseline contribution and the $2 million that got released from closed-out project, we can put in about $10.1 million into CIP from general fund and Measure S. And another really important funding source for our CIP is the special revenue funds, including the gas tax, Measure A, Measure M, Measure W, and the road maintenance. We have acquired the IMI. Total revenue on a year-over-year baseline projection is at 8.3 million. But we have some funding that we can draw down on. So this year, we are projecting $11 million from this funding source to continue to fund our transportation, street, bike, and pedestrian projects. Some of the highlight is that our clean water program is close to completion. And we are continuing to commit about $8 million annually to our smooth street programs. And our storm and flood control also receive the much-needed funding from our approved stormwater fees, which is roughly about $4 million that we will start to receive next year. And this is really important because that's something that we never have before. Now we have a reliable funding. We can do something really good for the community. And the first thing before anything can happen is to really get the storm water master plan completed. So we know we have a complete list. We have our priority list. And we have our cash flow projection. And then we can start thinking about how to finance the entire facility upgrade. The next one is our byway and pedestrian improvement. The five-year CIP total for this category is at 12.7 million. And just for next year, we are putting in $3 million, including 1.6 million for several to schools and $500,000 for the quick build program. The unfunded project list is, it's growing bigger now. Back in April, we bring the unfunded project to the council during the CIP preview. That number, I remember, is like 320 million. And now, because some of the project get moved to this unfunded project list, so the total have gone up. Some of the unfunded project, like our Central Park, downtown parking garage, our courtyard facility and swimming pool, all need funding if we want a new facility. Moving on to our challenge this year, I think this is one of the most difficult budget that I put together. The reason is that our revenue is stay relatively flat with only moderate increase. And VLF shortfall is still uncertainty when we develop the budget. And the TOT loss, about $3 million loss because of the Marriott Hotel closure. And then on top of that, we experienced a lot of challenge from the rising cost to just provide business. And not to mention the rising pension costs. This year, it's going to be just the first year of the increase. And we are going to see pension costs keep going up for the next seven, eight years until it pick. And then it start gradually come back down. So those are all the challenges that we have experienced. And as we also mentioned, even though we are facing all these uncertainties, we are still, normally, we start cutting on CIP. That's usually the first step. But this year, we didn't do that. We continue to contribute into our CIP projects. And we continue to find way to improve our services. So that's why we are running a deficit. We invest in our community. We draw down our fund balance in order to continue to provide a good service our community deserve and demand. So that challenge doesn't go away. Many of the items that listed on this list will continue into the future years. So we mentioned we cannot continue to operate in a deficit year after years. Something has to be done. Then how do we do it? Actually, in order to balance a budget, the logic is really simple. We either increase our revenue or we decrease our spending. What can we do to increase our revenue? One of the things that we mentioned previously is how we can optimize our cost recovery. And we can look for special funding. We can look for grant funding opportunities and see if there's any new revenue that we can bring in for the city. Also, perhaps to consider a future revenue measure. Everything need to be considered. Everything need to be on the table. In terms of how do we reduce our spending, I think that's part of the belt tightening that we have to do in the next year and in the coming years is to look at what discretionary spending that we can cut. Or perhaps look at our staffing level, where we can find efficiency. And if we have to, then we have to reduce our staffing with hiring freeze and other measures. Because we spend about 70% of our budget in personnel costs. And that's a really big portion where our money go. So as I mentioned, we look at revenue improvement from all angle. And on our spending, we also look at it from many different angle and try to balance the budget for the years to come. And another one that I have mentioned to the council in our April meeting is to review the general fund reserve policy. And currently, we are setting our operating reserve policy at 25%. We will have to do a thorough review and study and come up with a recommendation for the council to consider. It's not in this meeting at all. We are going to bring it back to you perhaps in January 2025. With that, it conclude my presentation tonight. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Through the mayor, just want to thank Karen for the presentation. But I also want to let the council know that our entire department head team is here tonight too, to answer any questions as well.
Well, thank you for that. And thank you to everyone for being here. And thank you very much, Karen, for that, for you and your staff. So let me open it up for public comment.
If you wish to speak on this item, please, if you're attending via Zoom, please raise your hand now. If you're in council chambers and you wish to speak on this item, please provide me with the yellow request to speak slip. We'll give you a few moments to do so. And Madam Mayor, I have no request to speak on this item.
Okay, well, then let's bring it back and close public comment. Bring it back to council for questions, comments. Who would like to start?
I can go.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Just a few. Karen, thanks for great presentation. Thank you to all the department heads for being here. I noticed the TOT tax, you had a $4 million.
Um, I noticed the TOT tax, you had a $4 million baseline. Did you remove the 3 million from San Mateo Marriott? So was it 7 million before? Okay, I just, I wasn't sure, I wanted to be sure. I noticed gas tax was included. And I know gas prices are going up, but I also know that electric vehicle adoption is going up as well. Did we account for that, the fact that we'll have less, probably less gas-powered vehicles?
Um, I, I think the gas tax revenue is something that has been really stable uh, from the past five years. It bring in about $3 million, 2.8 to $3 million every year. So it's something that really predictable. And we, 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 we don't have to worry that the gas tax go up and down every year. It's really flat and stable. So, um, this is something we can rely on year after year for, for funding our, our street and CIP projects.
Okay, so you think even though, presumably over the next five years, the number of people driving, you know, gas-powered vehicles is going to continue to drop. Do you think they'll be offset by the increase in gas price?
We will continue to monitor that. But I think for electric vehicle, they do charge a flat fee, um, for, for that purpose. And we'll get some money, uh, one way or the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it. The only other observation obviously was if we had a catastrophic damage uh, on, on any particular building, it could, would be devastating to our budget, right? Because we have a lot of CIP projects that we can't even fund. But, but that doesn't account for the fact that we could have a garage failure or a building failure and we'd really be stuck.
Um, we, we do have CIP projects that we already approve. And some of the projects that if they haven't started yet, it's up to the council whether you need to reallocate some of the resources to something more urgent. And we don't really have a cash flow issues. So, um, the city is operating on a pool cash environment. Um, although we have limited, uh, reserve, um, but we, we have funding that we can pull during emergency. So I, I don't think we have a cash flow issue if there's something happening.
Thank you. That's reassuring. Thank you so much.
Okay, I would like to, Councilmember Hedges.
A couple of questions. The one place I saw that I didn't think we'd responded to was on the pension. With hiring new employees, it changes the actuarial figures. Now, I know that hasn't got anything to do with the, the big deficits out there that we have to fund. But it should have something to do with the day-to-day payments that we have to send to purrs. So when you, when you hire new people, they don't have vested interests. So that's, the old people that's left are already drawing their pension. So you're actually changing the actuarial figures and lowering your pension payments.
Um, pension is a really complex topic. A new employee come in, if they're PAP members, usually, um, they cost less. But also, CalPERS pension requirement is based on many assumptions. For example, if their assumption for mortality goes up, then suddenly the city have to pay more because our unfunded pension liability will also go up. And if they are assuming, uh, people start retiring earlier, then we also have to, um, adjust our, our pension liability. Uh, inflation is also one, long-term investment return is another. There's many factor that can contribute into, um, what is our unfunded liability. And so far, what I have seen, um, every time CalPERS change their assumption, it also have a negative, almost always have a negative impact on, on the, on the city's pension liability.
Yeah, I was just focused on the ability, since you have new employees that aren't vested. I know that many of my compatriots took a buyout because they just wanted to get rid of people with a lot of time. Because then that resets their pension liability. So the other, uh, well, that's it for right now. I'll come back later.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to go next? Councilmember Lorie.
Thank you through the mayor. Uh, thank you, Director Huang. Um, I had, I had sort of a, an, another question about unfunded pension liability. And I apologize for, uh, you know, I, this is something that I think I've kind of occurred to me as you gave your presentation. But can you maybe speak a bit to when we might talk about potential funding strategies for the unfunded liability? Um, and would that help at all with current increases that we're seeing? Or would that just be for the unfunded part?
Well, um, our, our funding strategy can have two different path. One, in, in the city of San Mateo, in the past, we have, when we have one-time revenue, when we have just unexpected one-time revenue come in, we have done this so-called additional discretionary payment directly to CalPERS. Because that's one way to reduce our pension liability more furtherly. You pay down your, your pension liability. Another, um, cam is that you will never be able to address the pension, um, unfunded liability. So in this, in that cam, the focus is on our cash flow projection, on, on stabilize our budget. So the logic of that is that during a, a good time, when we have money, that we can set aside, perhaps set above a, a pension trust fund. So we can accumulate, um, some money in, in, in a, in a budget stabilization fund, um, using it when, when CalPERS did something like lost in investment or not meeting some, some criteria, our pension have to go up. Because of that, we can draw down on that, that trust fund in order to stabilize our budget. So we don't have to cut services when, when time get tough. So there's two different cam. One is to directly address our pension liability. The other is to stabilize our cash flow. So, um, usually we, we go with one, one or the other, or we can do both. But it's a, a much complicated topic than tonight we can address it. If the council is interested on this topic, we can bring it back as a study session for the council to consider in the future.
Thank you. No further questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you so much, Director Huang. Um, I wanted to give you and, um, and our city manager an opportunity to, to speak to the, sort of your vision and strategy for the health of the organization in terms of the staffing structure. And, um, and, you know, as was mentioned numerous times, uh, over the course of these years, we've been, um, struggling to, uh, to retain staff and recruit staff. And, um, and also having governed through the pandemic during very lean years, this is now the second time I'm looking at potentially a fiscal sustainability plan that could involve concessions. And so, um, you know, it's worth noting that there were some additional, um, positions that were created. And, um, and then I would love to hear about how your, um, you know, what was the thought process in creating new positions? And what the, um, what the financial outlay will be in, um, in those, those, those new expenditures that we're committing to? And, um, and how that fits into the bigger picture of your strategy?
Sure, um, Martin, can you help me pull up one more slide? Councilmember Lee, thank you for your questions. Uh, we did added, uh, positions through this proposed budget. So we're going to pull up that summary for you. Um, it's a little small, I hope you can see it. So, um, in this proposed budget, we increased our headcount merit position by 13. Um, and the cost is listed here on the second column, right next to the FTE. Um, some of the positions are funded by the general fund. But most of the general fund funded position, I think a total is three and a half position. It's mostly offset by other cost recovery method and, um, or eliminating putting positions. So the net impact on general fund is limited. The other position that we added, I, I think I can let our city manager add, add on to that is really what our operation needs uh, in order to keep up with the maintenance that we need and the new shore treatment plans, um, getting ready for, for operations.
Yeah, thank you, Karen. So to your question, Councilmember Lee, uh, there is a level of service and expectation that I believe as a city manager, we need to deliver and provide to our residents here and businesses to the city. And so we were really strategic in it. That's why I have the department head team here too. If we want to go into deeper into some of these, um, full-time positions and the added value of what the community will see in terms of benefits. Uh, really when we look at just overall, I've been really talking about as, as the city manager over the last 10 months is really protecting our assets of what we currently have and maintaining what we currently have, our infrastructure. And so you'll see, uh, one of the main, main items here is, uh, five new bodies in the Public Works Department. Uh, two supervisors that are helping work, uh, with line staff and actually rolling up the sleeves and are working supervisors, along with three maintenance workers as well, uh, which will help not only with stormwater, uh, maintenance. You know, when we look at the standard operating procedures of making sure that, you know, year-round, we're maintaining our storm drain system, that we're cleaning our storm drain systems. Um, that's very important. When we look at the police department, we're looking at mental health and wellness. You know, with the senior analysts, looking at a whole human services element of how we can, you know, be compassionate to our community and help during, you know, really, uh, difficult times in people's lives, to be able to respond compassionately and being caring as well. In addition, looking at, you know, it's not on here, but there's community services officers where we're looking at five part-time community services officers. So really looking at bolstering up our civilian, uh, response to help meet the needs of our community. And our chief could talk more about that. Um, looking at just our wastewater treatment plant, we have a billion-dollar plant on the horizon that is going to be coming online here. Um, it's probably going to be the first quarter of the new year where we'll see it really come online. But we have to staff that appropriately because we also need to operate that facility to be, um, top-notch for our community. But also we're environmental stewards. So we need to be able to protect our environment. And so there's an increase in staffing to get that new facility up and running. You look at the library and our librarian can, can talk about just the support from volunteer support and also customer service and being responsive at the same time. I need that is, that, that has, you know, the last few years needed, needed some additional support. And so it was really kind of utilizing a scalpel, working with our department head team and being really strategic. Same thing with Parks and Rec, I can go into everything about how, uh, we're going to be able to increase services, even in light of having this, uh, major deficit that we have. When you look at the actual general fund dollars, because really I worked with our department team and major kudos to this department team for figuring out, um, where we could actually, you know, whether it's a part-time position, it wasn't working out for us to really hire, you know, where are the offsets at basically? And so we were able to offset a lot of our, um, a lot, a lot of these asks that we have here. It's almost reimagining how we're approaching the work that we're doing. And so I'm just great, grateful to them. And so when you really look at, in the totality, adding 13 new positions for a cost to the general fund of $225,000, that's been really strategic, um, in our approach. And that's really thinking differently, um, with, with our fundings. And, you know, the department teams here, if you really want to get into the, the details of what, what added value and services we're going to provide. But, um, you know, housing specialists, we have a lot of work ahead of us that we got to do on housing. Affordable housing is a key issue that we need to do. Senior planner, you just heard earlier this evening about just the general plan and the housing element implementation. These are all positions that are going to help support, uh, the, the great work that this council has approved. And, you know, it's what we're responding to the community with all that community engagement that we've heard. Um, I don't take it lightly. I know that there's strong headwinds, um, that are economic headwinds that have come our way that, you know, our finance director has discussed. But we're committed and, you know, because of the fiscal prudence, not only of this council, previous councils and administrations, to be able to have, uh, the reserves that we have on hand, it allows us a runway. And it allows us a runway, one, is time is on our side here in the short term so that we can see, um, how the economic winds are treating us. But two, it allows us then to work as an executive team, as a department head team, to really look at what belt tightening would look like, um, in the future. Three is it allows us to really look at, have a discussion about a reserve policy. And if we were able to free up funds, even if it's just a one-time deal so that we can continue to invest in our CIP, there's a big need. There's been a lot of deferred maintenance for years and years and years. And as the city manager, I didn't think it was appropriate to, you know, take the foot off the gas and making sure that we're still investing in this infrastructure. Because if we don't do that, we're going to start seeing closures and caution tapes. Right now, we have one garage down, actually through August right now. Uh, because we, we've gone to that point, we're at the breaking point. And so that's the second El Camino garage. Um, and so I don't want to see more and more of that. And so trying to make those investments now is, um, really key. But, you know, between, it's going to be a multi-pronged approach where we'll have to do the financial sustainability planning, um, and then come back and have those hard discussions here, um, over the next year. But at least we have that. Some cities aren't fortunate. You'll, you'll hear about deficits, uh, throughout San Mateo County, um, and the other cities. And so we're not alone in this, but we'll have to go through these exercises to see where, where we end up. Sorry, that was a long-winded way of kind of telling you where we're going. You could read the budget transmittal report, it really lays it out. It's all, is it mayor, 13 pages?
Actually, 17 with the AR.
Okay, 17 with agenda report. But it's really helpful, it kind of lays that all out.
Excellent, well, thank you. And just to underscore, 13 additional, um, positions for 221,000. Um, and, uh, which is, which is a great deal. And I, um, and I appreciate you, you, um, making the point about protecting our assets and the approach that, um, you are taking. And I think the city is taking in terms of us recognizing that prolonged, um, unfunded CIP does bring us to the breaking point. Um, and is actually, um, you know, is, is actually exponentially more expensive than, than committing to the maintenance and upgrades that our, our community needs and, um, and our facilities need as well. Um, and I'm, and I'm really happy to, um, to see the, you know, the work that we're doing to improve and enhance services. Um, you know, it, it says a lot that, you know, we went through the pandemic without cutting any one of the 600 jobs that we have here at the city. And so looking forward, I hope that we can, um, maintain going in that direction. Um, you know, we've, we've worked really hard to build up the reserves we have to take us through these hard times. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hedges.
So this is a question about, uh, something that was occurring about 18 months ago. When I first got on the council, uh, this is actually a question for the city manager. When I first got on the council, I was meeting with Drew and a group of people. He was setting up a business registry. And there was pushback on it. And I think the goal for that was to identify businesses that aren't getting a business license. Have we done anything with that? Because it just sort of disappeared.
Karen, do you have any update on that? I know that we have HDL who-
We do, uh, conduct audit. We do conduct audit for our business license. And, and actually, our business license revenue is projecting to be about 1.0, no, 7.8 million next year. So it's doing quite well.
So this is that whole program that was started then?
Um, I, I think, um, Councilmember Hedges, you, you probably mentioned about the two new thing we added to business license. One is for commercial rental and, uh, for residential rental. Um, so this two was newly added. In the past, we do not charge business license on those. And, and over the last two years, we added that into our-
There were about six people that attended these meetings that were really upset about it. And I don't know how I got drug into it, but I did.
So any other comments, questions?
One more question through the mayor.
You're finished? Yeah, okay.
One more question through the mayor. Uh, wastewater treatment plant. I know that when this launches, we're going to be supporting the cities of Foster City and part of unincorporated San Mateo. Is there anybody else or is it just those two?
Looking to our public works director to come on up.
So I guess the question is revenue in, like, obviously labor costs are up. Inflation is sky-high. Have we done anything to recalibrate or reset what we'll be charging for the services of the new wastewater treatment plant to our city partners of Foster City and unincorporated San Mateo County? San Mateo County?
Yeah, so we have City Foster City as a co-owner of the treatment plant, and we provide wastewater treatment and collection services to the cities of town of Hillsborough. About half of the town goes to the treatment plant, as well as the Crystal Springs County Sanitation District, and then a small pocket of unincorporated counties. So, we do charge them their proportionate share based on their flow allocation in terms of our operational costs. And then, we're also charging them their fair share of the clean water program costs that are attributable to them. Foster City pays different costs as, you know, owner of the treatment plant than the upstream satellite agencies. So, it depends on what parts of our system they pay into in terms of our clean water program costs, which includes the plant as well as collection system improvements. So, we charge them their fair share amounts. But all of that is tied on, you know, to an original 1989 agreement that we have with the partner agencies. And so, we will be revisiting some of those clauses in terms of when we come out of the clean water program, what are the appropriate dollar thresholds in terms of when we engage on capital projects and things like that at the treatment plant. So, so far, we don't see an issue in terms of what people are paying. It is based on their flow allocation. So, it's a reserved allocation of how much capacity they need. So, that seems like the most appropriate mechanism in terms of what they pay in terms of their cost.
Just to follow up to that, thank you, Matt. Labor costs, though, so, all the labor who work in the facility will be San Mateo employees, even though it's co-owned by Foster City?
Yes.
So, as labor costs go up, those increases through this model will be passed on to everyone else?
Whatever our actual operational costs are, those get costed out based on those proportional shares to all the partner agencies.
All right. Just thank you for clarifying. Appreciate it.
And before you sit down, I think it would be important for you to share with the public one slide that Director Huang had in terms of CIP expenses showed stormwater at 0.6 and then down to 0.2, 0.2 versus, we just heard, we're getting $4 million a year. So, where is the rest of the money going related to stormwater?
In terms of capital projects, we didn't want to program maximum use of that money right now. The biggest priority for us right now is to update the storm drain master plan. And so, we're getting consultant on board to do that. I think we're bringing the full contract for that to the council at the next meeting in June. And so, once we have that, we'll have a prioritized list of the things that we need to do. We'll have recommendations on how we can fund and finance those improvements. And so, we expect to come back to council with next year's budget cycle to have full accounting of what we think that we'd do for the capital program in terms of the stormwater. On the operational side, two of the staff that we talked about are two staff that were part of what was analyzed when we looked at the stormwater fee is that we needed two additional maintenance staff to help us with maintaining our storm drain system. So, that is two of the staff that are proposed and part of the reason that they don't hit the general fund is because they hit the new stormwater fee. And so, we have staff as well as equipment and supplies costs that we have built into the operational budget that will be coming out of the storm drain fee. But the capital side, we're going to wait until we get done with the master plan. Other than, we do have money allocated that if we get, especially if we get our earmark request that we put in to our elected representatives at the federal level for efforts to move forward on dredging of the lagoon in terms of design permitting and environmental, that we do have money budgeted to be sort of our matching share of those costs. We're hopeful that we'll be successful on that. And so, we do have that programmed into the capital budget.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Director Fabry.
I have something to add on to the stormwater fee, which is, we mentioned, is going to bring in $4 million every year. And at the get-go, when we build a budget, Matt talked about keeping the current general fund-funded storm maintenance program in general fund. We don't want to use this stormwater fee to subsidize that already funded by general fund's program. We keep it in general fund, continue to let general fund fund it. But because of the $4 million, now we can hire two more maintenance worker. And we try to use maximum all we can get from the stormwater fee to do CIP. So, that's the intent.
Great. Thank you very much. And I very much appreciate the focus on transparency and letting everyone know in the community and staff where our revenues are coming from, where the opportunities are, but also the challenges, because we're all in this together. So, and I commend staff for actually putting in a headcount that will be, if approved, will be a grant writer. Because we keep talking about wanting to get new revenue, we have to have somebody doing all that work. So, very important. Okay, well, I think we are finished.
So, tonight's is the first public hearing. I don't need council action tonight, but two weeks, exactly two weeks from tonight, we are going to bring it back to the council for budget adoption. And at the time, two weeks later, we will actually ask the council to adopt free resolution. One is the 2024-25 capital and operating budget and the five-year CIP program and the gain limits. So, there's going to be free resolution bringing back for you two weeks from now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on. So, tonight's meeting will conclude with a closed session on conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. This meeting will adjourn following the closed session, but we will first take reports and announcements. Who would like to... Do you have a... Councilmember Lorraine, do you have any?
Thank you, through the mayor. I think I just would like to touch on some of the discussion we just had in this budget item with regard to options for addressing our unfunded pension liability. And I maybe just wanted to ask the city manager if we foresaw that coming in an upcoming item already, or if we should ask for something new.
So, I think I'd like to see a nod of heads if you'd like to have a future study session on that. That's totally fine. Understanding that typically, when we're able to do that type of longer-range planning, just as the finance director mentioned, is when you might have some surpluses typically. But we're happy to have that conversation and provide all those options forward and have a further discussion. If it's the council's desire, it'd probably be, you know, in the fall or early next year, most likely.
Okay. I mean, I...
I see two nodding heads.
I mean, I appreciate that feedback. I, you know, we also just heard multiple items in which we were talking about all the work we need to do with the general plan and so on. And so, I don't necessarily want to bring forth something that may not be fully appropriate at this time. For example, as you just noted, if we don't, you know, if we're not looking at surpluses at this moment, and that would be the time to consider, you know, that might be a better time to consider it, then maybe this is not the right time to ask about that.
May I offer an alternative perspective? You know, as our city manager has stated, we have prolonged critical upgrades and maintenance on facilities that are now half a century old. And we might, you know, in the hard times, in the lean years, need to look at what facilities are at a breaking point and where we need to allocate costs to fund CIP projects, to minimize and hopefully completely avoid any closures. So, I still think that it's an effort that worthwhile. And one of the things that I feel very strongly about, and I know our community does, over 500 community members in the city of San Mateo have advocated for investment in the King Center and asked our congress member and our senator to support a congressional allocation. And we secured $850,000 in grants for the King Center. And that's only 25% of the needed costs. And so, looking ahead, there, you know, if we don't make these investments, we could be looking at closures of critical services that are being provided in North Central, our equity community priority area. And so, I strongly feel like a conversation is worthwhile to make sure that we're staying in the course for, you know, for our CIP, especially if we know that we're going into challenging years. So, whether we're flush or we're lean, this is a necessary conversation.
So, maybe can I suggest, building upon Councilmember Lee's comments, that we leave it to the city manager as to when is the best time that you can leverage other things that are being discussed?
So, there were two different... I'm kind of getting mixed messages, because I heard pension liability rainy day fund, and then I'm hearing from Councilmember Lee talking about the CIP, which are different. On the CIP side, we actually, it's part of the blue sky. We're going to have a, we're going to do way more work on that. And so, that's already part of the priorities of the council that I'll be bringing back in this upcoming year. The item that we don't have in there is the pension, like a pension trust fund or liabilities for long-term.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Investments. That's what was going on there.
My personal preference would be to hold off on that right now and get deeper into all the other things.
The financial sustainability planning first before we get there.
Because then we'll know a better, well, a better idea of the impact.
Where we end up.
Cheerfully withdrawn.
Okay.
All right. Who else? Yes, Councilmember Hedges.
So, just a couple of things. I don't think I recorded this last meeting. So, I'll be voting in about a... I'll be voting on $320,000 for our get-around program for senior taxis later next week on the CCAG. So, the Park and Rec did a good job in getting that request in for funding. The other issue is, I'm very proud of our police department, and I've gone on ride-alongs before. I went on a ride-along Saturday night for 12 hours. I rode with Officer Miller, Green, and Cypress, and they're so professional. We arrested a woman on a warrant out of San Jose. They were so kind to her and worked with her. It's kind of tragic, actually, the person themselves. I won't go into detail. And then, we found a young man who there'd been a complaint on. It wasn't that young, really, probably 40s, that had been swinging a club around close to the Central Park. And when we found him, he was obviously impaired. And they did a search of him, found narcotics, equipment to use that narcotics. The poor guy was looking at the ground and said something to the effect of, "The concrete is moving. Is that because you guys stopped me?" So, he was really messed up. And they offered him a place to stay they had available, and he turned it down. So, there's, and they were very kind to him. They did send, he was on parole. They did send a message to his parole officer. But there's so many people that need help in this community, and our police department is so good at working with them. And I will say one thing about this woman. She was unhoused, the earlier one I talked about. And at least, it was getting pretty chilly Saturday night. She was going to have a warm place and a meal while San Jose decided on whether they were going to come pick her up or not. So, I just can't speak fondly enough about our police department. They were so professional. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a report out from the middle school and elementary school district, Foster City San Mateo School District. They've expressed an interest to us about working with the city to find a site for affordable housing units to be built specifically for public employees and teachers. I know we've heard in the past similar, I think Alex could, the city manager can chime in, we've heard similar from the high school district, that there's an interest there. And I know in the past, the community college, CSM, has expressed interest. So, just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that those conversations are happening. And I look to the city manager to help us advance that.
Note taken, and we'll talk to our housing staff about that.
And then, fun stuff. The Best of San Mateo Awards event is tomorrow night. If you guys all want to attend, it's at CSM, and you can go on to the San Mateo Chamber to get tickets. Still available.
And there are three mayor's awards, special ones.
Wow. Also, make sure you go on there and find out the winners for all the best categories and use our San Mateo Cup business. We already had an announcement earlier day about the Pride Parade. San Mateo Pride, County Pride Parade is happening here in the great city of San Mateo, 10 o'clock this Saturday, June 8. The Peninsula Humane Society hosts something every year called the Bark and Brew Fest, which is an outdoor event on June 22 in Washington Park. It's one of their big fundraisers. If anyone wants more information, it's PHS for Peninsula Humane Society dash SPCA.org forward slash beer, B-E-R. Thank you. That's all I have for today.
Excellent. Councilmember Lee, anything from you? No? Okay, I guess the other thing I will add, which is good news, is at the beginning of May, myself, Councilmember Hedges, Director Fabry of Public Works, and city manager Kajiki, and we were in Washington, DC, speaking with elected officials, agency staff about opportunities to partner to fund some of the things that were happening. And one of our meetings was with FEMA, because our North Shoreview community has been on the FEMA flood map for a very long time, and it has done a lot of work along with city staff. And they informed us at the meeting that all the outstanding issues had been resolved. And we, just this past week, received the official letter confirming that that was the case and that in the middle of October, that that map change will be made. And that will result in substantial financial relief for the people in that community, and then also will help us in many other regards. So, anything, city manager, you want to add to that?
Nothing else to add?
Oh, okay. That's it. So...
Can I ask, is that citywide, or is that only in Shoreview?
North Shoreview. North Shoreview, it's a specific part of the map. So, with that, I will call this part of the...
We're going to take power off our public comment or see if we have any public comment for the closed session.
Oh, excuse me. My apologies. Yes.
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Thank you so much, city clerk. Okay, well, before we go into closed session, I want to call this meeting adjourned. We're getting there.